Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. Let's open with prayer and the pledge. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to gather here and go about the city's business. We ask you to be with us as we deliberate on the many items that we have on our agenda tonight. We ask that we thank you for not too much snow, but enough to slow things down and the safety of our citizens is always of utmost importance. We just ask you to be with all our city workers as they're out there, either public safety or those working the streets and elsewhere. Be with them. We ask you to be with our council meeting tonight. In your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance
... of the United States of America into the Republic of which stands one nation under God in the visible liberty and justice.
Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, Councilwoman Fitzpatrick. Councilwoman Tibbs. Councilwoman Bench. Mayor Protem O'Neil. Councilwoman Caloris. Councilwoman Moore. Councilwoman Balls. Councilwoman Clark. Mayor Browning. We have nine members present and zero absent.
And I'd like to remind the audience tonight that during the council meeting, please remain quiet and refrain from speaking. They also list cheering and booing and all that other bad stuff, so... This is also an excellent time. If you would, please check your cell phones and see if they are on vibrate or off so they do not interfere with our meeting tonight. And that takes us back to you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We are at announcements. I do have several this evening. As a public safety reminder to our residents and businesses, we ask that the fire hydrants are cleared from any snow. And currently, there are no delays on solid waste recycling collection services due to the weather in the city. Changes that may not allow waste management trucks access to the roads for collection purposes are posted on the city website. And a reminder too that our curbside recycling has now included more materials and it eliminates the sorting process. For all details, visit the city website at www.saginaw-mi.com. And the city convenient waste station located at the Holland Avenue entrance will be open this Saturday, or next Saturday, February 14th, at 10 o'clock a.m. till 2 o'clock p.m. Mayor, our next item of business is public hearing.
Okay, and the purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive comments for consideration at the time action may be taken. Public comments shall not be addressed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the hearing. Begin by stating your name. The applicant or main presenter will be allowed 15 minutes. Other speakers will be limited to five minutes. Speakers may ask general questions, but shall not ask questions of specific council members. And our public hearing tonight, Madam Clerk?
We have one. It's on the 2015-16 Community Development Block Grant Program, Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and the Home Investment Partnership Program.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to, at this time, call for any public comments. Any public comments on the Block Grant Program? Is there anyone that'd like to speak about the Block Grant Program? Please come up to the podium, one at a time. Please state your name and reason you would like to present.
Thank you. My name's Evelyn McGovern, and greetings to you, City Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Clerk. Again, my name's Evelyn McGovern. I'm the president of Women of Colors, and I want to emphasize the "S" because we don't matter what color you are, if you're white, black, red, or blue, we all have to work together in this community. And so, I'm here today to ask you to support us again this year and support our youth mentoring program GEMS, which is the acronym for Great Empowering Motivational Sessions, which is comprised of Girl Pride, Sugar and Spice, and Young Men Who Dare, where we provide educational mentoring programs for youth. And this past year, we mentored 115 youth at least one time. And with that, we teach kids about self-esteem, critical thinking skills. We help them deal with peer pressure and bullying, and we just listen to them, listen to what they have to say. Because if you listen hard enough, they'll seem like a marking bird if you're empathetic to their needs. We know it takes a village to raise a family. So, we not only just mentor our kids, Girl Pride, Sugar and Spice, and Young Men Who Dare, but we go out into the community and we provide mentoring at schools, at the juvenile detention center, at the intermediate school districts. And that's what sets us apart from the other organizations. Over 75% of our youth are at risk, and they come from low-income family households. And we mentor kids from the east, west, south, and north side of town. We just currently secured office space at SVRC Lifelong Learning Academy. And we did that to better serve our youth and to provide... Because our kids don't have the proper transportation, we thought it would be easier to go where they are. And we also receive a lot of our referrals from the foster care system, DHS, school counselors, other agencies and organizations. Last year, we were before you because we also needed funding, as we have in the past. And there was an issue about us receiving funding to take our kids to Chicago. And yes, we did want to take our kids to Chicago, but at no time did we plan on using any CDBG funds, and I'd want to make that clear to you. And so, unfortunately, our kids were not able to take that trip because we didn't raise the funds. I also requested a meeting, and we met with staff regarding some concerns about the issues that were brought forth last year that we had. But unfortunately, those issues were not resolved. For several years, we have received funding from CDBG funds, but I know there's other organizations much larger than ours that have received funding and much more. And I just want to give you a history of the funds we've received. In 2006, we received $4,000, and that was just for our Girl Pride program and our Sugar and Spice program. And then, we were told we needed to have a boys' program, that we just couldn't have a girls' program. So, that's when Young Men Who Dare was established in 2007. And so, that year, we received $6,000. The most we've received since that time, we were awarded $20,000, but there was a cut across the board, so we received $17,700 in fiscal year 2012. And that's when we started the mobile mentoring, which we have tripled the services since we started receiving block grant funding. And I just want you to... I thought that that's what we're supposed to do, increase the services, try to find matching funds, collaborate with other organizations so that we can do more. And I know we've done that, and we want to do even more. This past year, we were awarded $10,000, and there was a cut again across the board, so we were awarded $9,570. And really, that's from block grant funds. That's less than $100 per kid a year. So, I really don't think we're asking for a whole lot here, but a lot is at stake. We have been in compliance all these years. We've had no violations. We've more than tripled our services. And we're talking $10,000 in the last three years. At this point in time, I don't know what else we can do. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Saginaw City Council, good evening to all of you. My name is Richard Stringfield. Presently, I am working as a volunteer for Women of Colors, and I'm here this evening speaking on their behalf. I retired from the Dow Chemical Company after working there as a research leader in the field of chemical engineers for 32 years. Since I began working with Women of Colors, I've had the pleasure to mentor several young men, and I am thrilled to have this opportunity. It is personally satisfying to talk to young men about the simple things that can be major roadblocks in their lives and listen to them and learn from them as we talk through potential solutions. I would like to thank Evelyn McGovern and the Women of Colors for this opportunity to engage with the youth in the Saginaw community. Over the last several years, it has become increasingly apparent that automation and the continuing advancements in artificial intelligence will have a huge impact on everyday life, and that's kind of the reason I'm here to talk about this thing. It is projected by scientists and economists that in the next 10 to 15 years, nearly half of the current jobs will no longer exist. Also, many of the new jobs that replace some of the lost jobs will require advanced training in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, or what is called the STEM education priorities. Students who excel in these areas of studies will have rewarding careers for years to come, while others may find the new job environment requires further STEM training even for some of the simpler jobs. One of the problems we face is that we lack the immense professional resources needed to help the students with the greatest need for extensive training in STEM classes. Women of Colors has recognized this change in demographic, and we are setting up an office at the Saginaw Learn to Earn Academy to begin working with the students to help prevent them from being overwhelmed by the changes in the future job market. One of our goals is to provide additional mentoring and tutoring to the STEM educational priorities. Another goal is to find the best technologies that are available to supplement the training already given by the teachers at Saginaw Learn to Earn Academy. I previously helped the highly successful Beano Vista High School's first robotics team as a volunteer there for 12 years. This program has become a valuable STEM resource nationwide, and it's clearly demonstrated the impact that hands-on training can have on student education. However, it is resource-intensive, and we need to look for other comparable, low-cost ways to meet the STEM requirements. There are new 3D display devices that have the potential to perform as virtual science laboratories without safety issues or typical costs, requirements for equipment, and professional assistance. Women of Colors is beginning this journey to help provide additional alternative STEM assistance to the youth of the Saginaw community. We recognize the need to introduce validated STEM resources that supplement current educational practice, and need is greater now than ever before. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Browning, Mayor Protem O'Neil, City Council members, and City Manager. We represent... Here to represent Saginaw County Youth Protection Council, my name is Jessica Hernandez. I am the Division Director of Teen Parent Services, and this is Valerie Elmore. She is the Division Director of Interlink. We both represent transitional living and emergency shelters. Excuse me. CDBG and ESG funds are critical to the operation of both of these programs. In November, the agency provided City Council and City Manager with a report that documented the effectiveness of our programs and our services. We work to stabilize lives of homeless teenage, pregnant, and parenting teens and their children, and homeless and runaway youth. With the support of the CDBG and ESG funds, our teen and youth will become successful, productive citizens of Saginaw County. We wanted to thank you for past support and future support. Thanks.
Greetings to all the members of the council. I thank you for your presence. My name is Ashton McMillan, and I am here on behalf of Women of Colors and Young Men Who Dare. Once again, thank you for being here. I'm a soon-to-be graduate of Northrop University, and I made it my personal business to make sure that I do not just get my degree and leave behind those individuals, those younger individuals from my city who were born and raised in the same city that I'm from. Young Men Who Dare has given me that opportunity to give back to those younger individuals and be a shining light in their life outside of what they see on a regular day-to-day basis, whether it be at school or at home. Before I take my seat, I'd just like to tell you a story of a young man that I had the privilege of meeting by the name of Jaheem Kope. He came to my youth group one Wednesday night, and we simply opened up the floor and just asked them what they were struggling with and what they were going through on a day-to-day basis. And he stood up with the most sincere heart. I remember the day like it was yesterday. He had on a not-so-clean white shirt, some jogging pants, and some just some regular Nike shoes. And he pretty much just stood up and said that individuals in schools should stop talking down against others who may not have the finer things in life because their parents may not be set up to provide them with that. And it touched me to my core. I pulled Jaheem to the side, and I asked him, "Jaheem, what do you want to be when you grow up?" He said, "I want to be a doctor." And it touched me so because he didn't want to be a basketball player, a football player, or, you know, something that, you know, young black men are stereotyped to be. But he said he wanted to be a doctor. And I guess I just want to close by saying that Young Men Who Dare gives me the opportunity to show him that, yes, he can do that. He can do anything that he puts his mind to and works hard at. And like I said, I made it my personal business to make sure that my face is seen, not for my glory, of course, using my father up in heaven and glorifying him, but I made it my personal business to not leave those younger individuals behind and to show them that, hey, you can be who you want to be. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Lulule Woodard, and I'm a member of Women of Colors. And as it has been stated, we are a diverse group of, excuse me, women. I've been in the group for over 14 years, as well as having the position as officer and board member. We work together to empower youth, women, and families. I speak to you as a retired teacher, as a social worker, and currently as an adjunct professor at Delta College. And so, having said that, I believe that our community is at its best when we give our best. And I believe that Women of Colors has done just that and continues to do that through our GEMS program that has been stated earlier, consisting of our youth groups. In addition, I believe that several... We have used several evidence-based programs in our programs, and that we teach our kids about giving back to the community. These are some additional things that the kids are taught in the program. In addition to that, learning etiquette, learning about cultural awareness, sewing. We have a new program coming up, and it's been on the website, about a new sewing program that's out there that's being held at SVRC starting next week, I believe. Also, these programs have become the after-school programs, and we know that since our school systems is in trouble, then we and Women of Colors is picking up the slack. We have to be able to do that. We are partners, we're better together, and we form great leadership skills and development when we work with these young peoples. And since I've been in there all of these years, you know, it's been just an honor and it's been a privilege to be able to see the young people come into the program to grow, to become leaders in the community, to graduate from high school, to go on to college and further their education, and then to come back to us and helping our programs in the GEMS program. And we really do need your support. Please support us in releasing funds to the Women of Colors, to the children, so that we can have a better community, we can have a better Saginaw. And again, help Women of Colors to carry that out. In April, in March of this year, we will be celebrating 22 years in the community, and I think that speaks volumes for an organization. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm one of the personal parents. I choose to come now because of my transportation. My name is Carol Ellis, and I live on Parkin Street. Last year, when I finally came home, because I bought the house in 2011, and I noticed there was a pile of...
Are you... Excuse me. Are you here talking about the Block Grant Program?
No.
Okay. Then we have personal appearances coming up after this where you'll be able to speak about that, okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep. You are listed on... I believe you're listed on our list. Yes. You are personal appearances, and we will call you up for that.
Yeah, I'd ask... Okay. I'd ask because I have a transportation that's coming at 7:00, and I'd ask if I could come up and speak before my transportation come.
We are unable to do that, okay?
It's okay. It's okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'm Christina Rosales, and I'm a member of Women of Colors. And I just want to share a little more information regarding Women of Colors' GEMS program. What we've invested in is Women Winning Futures, and that's a program that we set aside, that we work with the young girls and boys ages 12 to 18, and give them some core values such as honesty, compassion, integrity, and help them use that to form a future plan. So, we work with them like in a five-year plan, giving them ways that they can set up their future, and have had the opportunity to work with a lot of the students. Also, just the opportunity as Women of Colors, we are also involved in a lot of projects in the community, so it's given me the opportunity to grow with Women of Colors and Saginaw community. Also, I think it's really extraordinary, people I've met along the way, and I hope that these young students that we're mentoring now will soon be folks that you'll see in the future in new jobs and environments. So, it really would benefit everyone if we continue to do our programs, Women of Colors, and I appreciate if you continue to fund us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lily Williams, and I am the Executive Director of the Saginaw County Community Action Agency. Good evening, Mayor Browning, and Mayor Protem O'Neil, and other council members and administration of the city. I'm coming before you this evening out of concern with the correspondence that I received on yesterday regarding the disqualification of our agency for CDBG funding. For a great number of years, our agency has partnered with the city of Saginaw in the provision of services to Saginaw County residents in the way of home repair programs, code enforcement, and just a number of different opportunities. But our mission and purpose as an agency, as we celebrate 50 years this year, is to enable low-income families to become self-sufficient. And by that, we provide a host of services that will enable them to be able to become possibly homeowners or even to maintain their homes as a homeowner. The concern that I have is regarding an issue that has been plaguing our agency and the city in that we've not reached a true resolution. It's been since 2004. There is a discrepancy in the resolution of the issues in that we made an appeal to the city, we received verbal authorization to proceed, and now we've learned that the authorization is invalid unless there is something in writing because our auditor, for one, will not allow us to close the matter until there is something in writing. So, there is an outstanding debt that is in question, and we believe that if we are allowed to sit down and talk, that a resolution can be achieved between our agency and the city of Saginaw because we do believe that some things did take place, but it's just a matter of a paper trail. We did request of the city to have the debt canceled and to do away with the affordability period as it relates to homes program. Again, we were led by... Led to believe by city administration that that approval was granted, and so we did use the funds as we were instructed to, as program income, and we spent those dollars in the CDBG programs. Each year, we've continued to disclose the concern because, again, our auditors would not close the matter unless there was something in writing. So, it has not been that the city was not aware of the issue and they did not pursue it with us, so we were led, again, to believe that the matter had been resolved. We can show where we spent the dollars in CDBG programs and that, again, I believe that if we do have the opportunity to sit down and talk, that you would rescind the decision to disqualify us for funding. And what I asked of you this evening is that you suspend that decision, that you allow us the opportunity to sit down and talk, because somehow we believe that there is a paper trail. We just don't have possession of it because of the change in administration. Thank you.
Greetings to the mayor and to all the members of council. My name is Christopher Watson, and I'm also a member of Women's of Color, the Young Men Who Dares program. I'm one of the mentors for that program, and I joined the program because it gave me opportunity to give back to younger men, more so because growing up, I had a lot of opportunities and a lot of people who poured into me, and so I wanted to return that. And so, this gave me an opportunity to do that with that being in education, different avenues for business opportunities and different things, showing them different ways of how they could be better citizens in their community. And so, with that being in etiquette and teaching them proper grammar and different things like that, the small things that sometimes we overlook because so many of our young people, they don't get the opportunity. And so, this was an opportunity for us to give that to them, and for the past, say, at least seven years, I had been working with Arthur Hill High School, where I started a program, Power Hour Benefit, and so this was another opportunity for us to give back into our community. And so, this kind of reminded me of that, and so I joined because of that reason. I'm only 22, but a lot of times, people my age, they're incarcerated or into other things, and so we wanted to change that, and we wanted to show that there's young men, African-American men, who are out here doing positive things to help encourage these young people. Thank you.
My name is Beth Ernitz. I'm the Executive Director of the Saginaw DDA. I'm here tonight to thank the HPC as well as the city staff for the process that they put forward for the CDBG funds. We have received funds for the past three years. I provided you at your last council at the strategic planning session an update as to the developments that we have been working on. Without these funds, we would not have been able to move forward, to complete those developments. And with the continued use of these funds plus other revenue sources, we will be able to continue to provide quality development initiatives such as facade improvement programs. We are currently working on a rebate program for commercial properties who install cameras that face public properties. Those are programs that we would not be able to bring forward without the assistance of the CDBG grant. So, again, I'd like to thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your time. I know these decisions are difficult, but thank you, and if you have any questions, please feel free to contact us.
I'm sorry, I'm a little hoarse, so I'm fighting with sinuses. I apologize. To you, Mayor Browning, Mayor Protem O'Neil, other council members present, as well as City Manager, good evening. My name is Minister Latrell Bailey. I'm the Media and Public Relations Director for Purge and Patrol of Saginaw, as well as the Executive Administrative Director for the New Community Outreach Center, and Pastor Larry Camel, our CEO. I just wanted to get up and take a few minutes to speak about... First of all, I want to say thank you for choosing to select Purge and Patrol as a recipient of the CDBG grant. It really does help to afford us the opportunity to reach further in the community. We did take suggestions of council from last year, and Purge and Patrol did relocate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that suggestion of Hill Your Alternative School. That is indeed our new location for our Community Outreach Center. 2316 Weber Street is the address. We did take ownership of that building as a leasing through Saginaw Public School District. And we did have an official grant opening on July 14th of last year, of which there were some members of council present, as well as members of the Block Grant administrative staff. We want to thank you for the opportunity. We are now in that community, and we've been able to do a lot in a short period of time. The lot that sits at the corner of Maplewood and Weber, that was a dilapidated lot, grass grown up, couple feet or so, with Pastor Camel reaching out to the city and Tom Miller Jr. of Saginaw Future, we were able to get that lot cut down. And we are going to turn that into a park area with the help of Tom Miller Jr. Also, we were able to lead forming the First Neighborhood Association in that community that never had... that never had a voice to come before council as a group, and now that is the Weber Wood Neighborhood Association. We've also since opened the Mary F. Camel Community Food Pantry, where we are certified partner with DHS, and we're open Mondays and Wednesdays from 10:00 to 2:00. And we offer food to help the community come in when they're at a low point and they need a little extra to make it through. Starting next month, we will become a certified partner with Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works, where we will become an access point for Michigan Works, where the residents in that community will be able to come and receive the same services they receive at the new location that's downtown on East Genesee. So those are some of the things that we're doing. Also, during our presentation to the Human Planning Commission, Mr. Tom Webb was a little concerned when I mentioned about us helping to fix that lot and understand the passion that he had. Audra Francis was right up the street. We were not aware the state of that park, but during our presentation to the Human Planning Commission, I personally gave him my word that Puritions on Patrol would adopt Audra Francis Park. So we're in the process of doing that, and we're going to have that renovated to make it a usable and enjoyable resource for members of that community and the City of Saginaw. So I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity, and we appreciate all that you do for this city. Thank you.
Wants to speak on the community block grant programs? Anyone else to speak on the community block grant program? Third and final time, anyone else to speak on the community block grant program? Seeing none, obtain a motion to close the public hearing?
Been moved in support.
It's been moved in support. Is there any discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Mayor, your next item of business, personal appearances.
And I'm going to read this as soon as I get to it. Personal appearances. Speaker is limited to three minutes. The purpose of the personal appearance is to address council. Speakers shall address their remarks to the council as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the topic of their presentation. Questions will refer to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speakers shall not ask questions of specific council members. Madam Clerk, our first, I think she's on.
I believe so. Our first appearance was Carol Ellis, and I think she's left.
Yeah, Carol Ellis, and did city staff have a chance to talk to her? Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Our next personal appearance is Hubert Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. You want to come up to the podium?
Hubert Alexander, mayor, council, city manager, staff. Received a letter from the city clerk in reference to, I have two homes, and one of them is in the green zone. My parents purchased that property when I was about seven years old. I grew up in that area as an adult. I bought the property from them in the mid-'70s. As an adult, I raised my own family there. I have a primary residence and a secondary residence. I resided both. And the letter that I was sent on one of the properties states that it's an unoccupied, a non-owner occupied dwelling. That is not true. I reside there. I spend time at both places. Believe it's a matter of semantics as far as how it's a liberal interpretation of the city ordinance, as how it applies to me in my situation. I believe the ordinance is vague and ambiguous in its application. I spoke with the clerk, and basically, their interpretation was very liberal, and we don't agree on the interpretation of the ordinance. Reason why one property is listed as a primary residence is for the, I believe it's the homestead tax, and you have to list one property as a primary residence, and if you have more than one home, which I do, the one that's listed as secondary, they're saying that I don't reside there, which is basically not true. The property's been in my family for, well, let me see, I'm 65, so I've owned it for at least almost 40 years, and my parents probably 20 years before that. It has memories, and as you get older, you know, memories, sometimes that's all you have. So it is of value to me and my, is that three minutes?
That's your three minutes. You can conclude your sentence. Go ahead, finish your paragraph there.
I wish the council to reconsider because, for one, the secondary home is in the green zone, and basically, I don't want an agenda or a, something the city is trying to do to, because basically, the cities went on record stating they want people who have property within the green zone to relocate, and I'm not in the mood to relocate. If, at best, I have seven kids, one of my kids is going to want that property.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and we will ask for response from our city manager. He will respond to us later and also to you, okay?
Okay.
So we'll get that from the man. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Mayor, your next item of business is remarks of council.
Okay, remind council that you have a five-minute time limit here, and tonight, we are going to begin with Councilwoman Annie Bennett.
Thank you, but I have no comment this evening.
And we're going to move on. Councilmember two.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank all the local agents or agencies that appear today. It's always encouraging to hear the passion that, that is there for our kids and our residents. So it's encouraging. We're not alone in the fight. There's a ton of people out there to make Saginaw better. CAC has done a lot for our city, and they continue to do a lot for our city, so hopefully we can look into, if it's just a paper trail, then that shouldn't be too hard to look into. This past week, Cheryl Payton Merrill, she, BV Township Treasurer, she did a guest column in Saginaw News, and I thought she raised a valid issue, a quality of life issue as far as lack of access to nutritious foods and a safe place to be active for our kids. And that may be an opportunity for Saginaw leaders, as well as BV leaders and county leaders to get together and then see if we can address this possible concern. It could be also an opportunity to support our local businesses such as the market, the farmer's market, and if it's an issue with public transportation, maybe that's something together we can look into. We can support Puritions on Patrol and their food pantry. I mean, that's definitely something they're attempting to address is their lack of nutritious foods in our area. It's something that we've been talking about for quite some time, so maybe this is an opportunity we can look into. Maybe we could do a joint petition. I believe a few months ago, Trader Joe said there might be an interest of establishing a location here in the, in the Great Lakes area. Maybe together, we can get together and show Trader Joe that, hey, you can have a business here and, and we will support you. Last thing, tomorrow, I will be at Stone Elementary School. I'll take 20 minutes to sit down and read to an elementary school student, and that's part of the Read Saginaw County program. It's a great program in which we spend a few minutes of our busy time to encourage our young, our young kids to pick up a book and read. So if you have time, I encourage you to look into that organization, possibly become a volunteer or contribute financially. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Thank you very much. Welcome to everybody, both here in the chambers and those who are watching on television or listening to podcasts later. I want to, first of all, didn't really have, haven't really had a chance to, from this, from this table, to express council's condolences to Brenda Moore at the recent loss of her beloved mother, and we want to say God bless you and you are in our thoughts and in our prayers. And know that's, it's a, it's a tough thing to lose someone so close, yeah. And also for Andre Barello, our city attorney, recent loss of your father, and Judge Barello, and we wish you all the condolences and peace that you and your family can get from, from all of your friends and well-wishers, so, thank you. It's also very good to hear from volunteer agencies about the CDBG funding. Every single one of them is passionate, as my fellow councilman had said. It was very good to hear about young people, young men mentoring other young people. Something we don't hear a whole lot about, but it's, it's very encouraging, and I thank you for, for your words. Also, for the, in regards to the CDBG, I believe this is the first of the hearings, right? We'll also be hearing at our, our next meeting? Is that, no, this is it. Okay, all right. So we have a number of folks here tonight who are interested in how the vote's going to come down, just to know that, you know, our, our agencies that, that meet and that come together with the Human Planning Commission over a course of a lot of weeks, the Human Planning Commission does a lot of work, and they do a lot of extracurricular listening and deliberating and compiling the data, and they're not paid for that. They're, they're coming as volunteers, and I just, over my eight years on council, I've, I've seen a number of them, and I just am very impressed with, with the work that they do and the heart and the passion that they have for Saginaw, so I want to thank them as well. And also, I want to thank Phil Carwatt for his passion for the city. I'm really encouraged because I see a lot of trucks out there today, tonight, and it's, it's a doozy out there, but thank you for, for your care and concern, and, you know, Friends of Hoyt Park has had some events the last several weeks, weekends, and we've had a lot of help from your organization, so thank you. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to follow up. I agree with Councilman Fitzpatrick that we need to thank the Human Planning Commission for their hard work, but I think we should recognize them as well by name. There's, I believe, 13 of them, and if I may take just a moment, I'm going to name the ones because these people are the ones who have done all the work that has resulted in the recommendations that are before council today, and as Councilman Fitzpatrick said, it's a lot of hard work. Commissioner Darlene Carpenter, Commissioner Hazel Moore, Commissioner Ricardo Longoria, Commissioner Susanna Sheltrow, Commissioner Susanna Smolkoska, Commissioner Jim Wagner, Commissioner Leola Wilson, Commissioner Jack Long, Commissioner Randy Shantz, Commissioner Elsenia Porterfield, Commissioner Tom Webb, Commissioner Patrick Williams, and I believe Chairperson, Commissioner Colleen Sproul. All of them need to be recognized, and they have my profound thanks for the hard work they do. They make our job tremendously easier. It's never easy still, the decisions have to be made, but the hard work has been done by this commission, so thank you. I also want to affirm Councilman Fitzpatrick's expressions of condolence to Councilman Moore and to our city attorney Barello as well. Going to the weather, it may be a little late, but I want to remind everyone, I happened to see three instances of it today, it is not proper for people to blow or throw your snow off of your sidewalks or your streets, into the streets. It's a danger to the public. And so please, be careful, be considerate of others, don't do that. There was a city career fair here at the city hall, so this built, this council room earlier, just last week, if I recall, and it was very well-attended, and I want to comment and thank all, commend and thank all those employees of the city who made it possible and participated. I unfortunately was not able to be here, but I understood there was quite a few attendees, and that's really tremendous. Along those lines, though, I'd like to mention that the Saginaw Career Complex is having its career and college expo tomorrow, February 3rd, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. They too have many career courses, including law enforcement, so if anyone's interested, it'd be a good opportunity to check out the career complex. With that, Mr. Mayor, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Citizens, to the citizens of Saginaw and to everybody this year, we'd like to thank you all for, for being here, and for the citizens on the outside, just listen, like to thank you too. I'm concerned about the gym program not getting a grant. If they're not getting one, I sure would like to have them get one. I just can't understand how we can have so many, so many citizens that come here and express how they're helping out, and they only want a small amount of money to, you know, continue the program. You know, I really wish that we can help them out, and I hope the city manager can find a way to find some funds in there for them. Being a mentor myself, it's ironic that the mentors would come here, and I just happen to be wearing my 25-year Big Brothers and Sisters pin that I got last week, and I'm so proud of. I've been a mentor for 25 years, and I understand the importance of mentoring. I can see somebody else in the audience that mentor with the kids with music and stuff like that. It's good to see John here, you know, and I know that mentoring helps, and it, you know, sometimes you don't see the results in a way from the people that mentor the kids because you don't know who's getting trouble or who's been mentored, so you don't know who it is. But we know one thing for sure, if we can save one kid's life or get them away from crime or doing some things that's not productive in society, then we all win by that situation. Because there's one thing about it, if we don't help those kids out, those kids will come to our doors and do some bad things, and it's been proven that that does happen. Normally, the kids are getting in trouble, the ones that don't have anybody in their life. They say it every day. They don't have no father at home, I didn't know what to do. You know, so that's why- You know, so that's why I give my time mentoring the Big Brothers and Sisters program because I know that it helps. Like I said, I have six little brothers. Now, one of them has never been incarcerated, no more than overnight. The one that was incarcerated overnight is straightening his butt out real fast. And now he's a productive member of society, 27-years-old, working every day, don't have any kids, so he's working. As a matter of fact, the police officer that cuffed him that night is a police officer helping get his first car. So, it do work. Because obviously, the police officer must have mentored him too, so, you know, I know that mentoring worked. So, I hope that we can find a way to help that out. I seen an article in the Detroit Free Press the other day about how the Saginaw, the land bank in Detroit, is giving away houses at half-price to people that work in the city or who live outside the city, who come in the city and live. They give them houses at half-price if they fix them up in a certain amount of time. And I think that would be a good suggestion for the city of Saginaw, maybe to partner with the Saginaw County Land Bank to see if we can get some people to live in the city that don't live in the city, to come live in the city and work here and help pay some taxes to keep us going here. You know, the parishioners on patrol, you guys are doing an excellent job. I went to that grand opening and you guys got that place proof-stuff and looking nice and there's always some kids around the center and that's a beautiful thing. I even checked out their computer lab and there was always a lot of kids there. So, y'all keep up the good work. At the, to state the meeting that we had last Saturday, I got some mixed emotions about us bringing people here and giving them tax breaks and then they take those tax breaks and then take a job outside or build a company on the outside of the city. I think that we need to do a better job of that or either revoke the tax break that we gave them or something, you know, and I don't think it's right for the, I think that we need to really work on the Saginaw future. They're going to be building stuff outside the city and then taking our city employees and giving them a home so that they can expand. I really don't like that. I mean, I don't think that's a good way for us to spend our tax dollars. We got plenty of land in the city of Saginaw we can develop and I think we need to be looking at that so we can keep jobs here in the city of Saginaw. Everybody know that if you come here and you don't live in the city, you pay only .75 taxes and if you live in the city, you pay 1.5% income tax. You know, so we definitely need to keep those jobs and those people in the city of Saginaw. If not, we're going to die. We go on receivership, have some manager come here and tell us what we supposed to do. And I don't want that to happen. You know, I want this to be a viable place for everybody to live and work and play and have a good time here. And we got a lot of exciting things happening in the city of Saginaw and we need to keep on attracting citizens to the city of Saginaw so we can live here. You know, I just can't say enough about those people mentoring, you know, but we got to keep jobs in the city of Saginaw. And that didn't sit well with me at all. I mean, it really hurt my feelings to know that that company was moving out in the Thomas Township in an industrial park that they spent $2 million to build. You know, I don't think that's fair. So, how many other jobs we going to lose out there to that industrial park? So, we need to keep an eye on that. Thank you.
Good evening. Citizens of Saginaw, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for their support for the loss of my mom, who was my best friend. And it's a struggle, but you need to understand, 84 years is a long time. So, I did have her for 84 years. And so, my heart is heavy right now with what I've heard about block grant and I've got some concerns. I've got some real concerns that we've allowed an unresolved issue to go on since 2004. So, city manager, please, let's try to look into that one, if we can. Women of color, as always, you always bring your support mechanisms. And so, I don't know what all of the criteria is for everything. This year, I didn't have a chance to come. My intentions was to come and I did come once and my mom got sick and I had to leave. So, for all that, they got up and spoke about their agency and what they do. Parishions on patrol, you know, my hat goes off to you and your crew because you right there for us. For the interlink system, I've taken many young girls to your facility, so we thank you for that. The other thing is, is the young man that spoke, Mr. Alexander, I'm sure city manager's going to look into that because you can't have two houses. Because if that's the case, then I need to be fine too because I got two houses. So, you know, one is a primary and one I just inherited. So, now it's all about where I'm going to stay. But it's going to be in the city. Don't worry about it. It's going to be in the city. To the ladies and gentlemen who sit on the community block grant, that whole team, I know that they work hard. I came last year. I sat through that for a little minute. That is not an easy task. You got this amount of money and this amount of people that want it and understand, it is greater. It is more needs than we have money for. I'm hoping that everybody can get something and be able to do what they need to do. City manager and staff, I need to thank you for the workshop we did on Saturday. I can honestly say, I truly was impressed. I was enlightened and it really was a fun activity, you know, and I left feeling like we did something productive. I'm not one of them ones that, I'm not a talker, I'm a doer. And I could actually feel the doing because I see the work in progress. And so, for that, I want to thank city manager and your staff. Andre, hat goes off to you, so sorry about the loss of your dad. Not only did I work with him in the system, you know, he is, he was, he was a very important part of my life and what I do on a day-to-day basis. So, you need to know that my heart goes out to you and your family at this time. Citizens, we need you to do just what you're doing. You see how this place is full tonight? We need this every Monday when we have a meeting. We don't know what's going on unless you come and tell us. So, for the citizens of Saginaw, my hat goes off to you as well for having enough or wanting enough to see this city be better to come out in all of this snow. And Mr. Carwatt, I just got one complaint with you. I need you to understand, today, it took me four and a half hours to sever my snow for your boys to come and put it back in my driveway. Now, Councilman Clark said, "Don't throw it in the street." I didn't throw it in the street, but when they came to clean my road right before I came, how about I had to take another hour to dig out? So, you know, can we do something different with how they push it in our driveways? You know, can we just do that? I'm not in front of a school anymore, so they don't clean my street, so I want a side street. So, I got stuck four times this morning trying to get to work. I still dug out, but I just want you to consider taking a blaze and go another direction, not back in our driveways. And with that, thank you so much, Mayor.
Well, it appears that the topic of the evening is the block grant. And I have to dovetail along with Councilman Fitzpatrick and Clark. Dan, you've been there eight years? Been there 10. Why did I go? First of all, I was curious. Second reason, I wanted to understand the process. I didn't want to be sitting here making a determination without understanding the process. Few people don't understand what the Human Planning Commission does. Give you a short history. They are represented across the whole community by precinct, only one member per precinct. So, one precinct or one side of the river isn't heavily weighted more than the other. Everybody has equal representation. They listen and listen and listen and they deliberate for hours. I've sat and listened to them. They listen to proposals. Every year, there's a new soup de jour. Not too very long ago, it was prisoner reentry. Then it was foreclosure counseling. And then there was a time with daycare centers. I had never seen so many people come out of the woodwork, all wanting to get in the daycare business or the prisoner reentry business. I call that duplication. And every year, I see duplicated services, either being funded or requesting for funds. I've got the utmost respect for the people in the Human Planning Commission because I know what they do. They don't get paid for it. They spend four days in December deliberating. Meetings are open to the public. And if you want an education, come sit in the back of the room and listen. Listen to what's going on, listen to the procedures, listen to the logic of why they fund or not fund a specific request. And it's all done above board. I believe that concludes my statement.
Well, thank you. Mayor Volkan, Mr. O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to everyone. First off, I do also like to extend my condolences to my colleague, Councilwoman Moore. I was able to attend the funeral. I knew her mother well, growing up in the same neighborhood and going to Holden School. She was quite a community leader, very concerned about all the children in the neighborhood and she was very impactful in the lives of many. So, thank you for that. And also to Attorney Barello, I'd also like to send my condolences to you on your loss as well. To all the volunteers who participate in the, not only the human planning, but to all of those who participate in our boards and commissions committee, which the Human Planning Commission is one of many. People may not realize the impact of those volunteers when they're making decision on zoning and variances, how to interpret and modify the ordinance to accommodate various programs and services in the community. One way to be involved and being part of the decision-making of city government is to apply for one of the boards and commissions and committees that we have. We have probably over 20, I believe. I'm not accurate on that amount, but we have quite a few. And we do have vacancies. I do know one vacancy commission, that's our compensation committee. That vacancy has been in existence for years. But there are other vacancies on various committees that exist. So, if you're interested in being a part of the decision-making process, please consider some of those boards and commissions and committees. Also, to all of the public speakers tonight who expressed their views on the block grant, those who expressed thanks and those who had some concerns, I want to thank you for coming forward tonight. This is an annual process that we go through and all the time, we come to the table realizing that there's just not enough money to go around. And you have many programs who've been in existence for over 50 years, like a CAC and you have a program that's been in existence for over 20 years, like Women of Color. And you have programs like the Parishions on Patrols who started back in '07 and worked with the police department. You know, you have a lot of programs who provide great services. You have programs like the RCO who, several years ago, we were fledgling here at our table whether to fund that organization. But now, that organization has made a complete turnaround, literally, to the benefit of the community. And so, those are the kind of things that when we fund and provide money for, we look for the results and I can truly say that those results are very apparent. So, when we look at, you know, the term is used kind of loosely, but, you know, a community safety net, for lack of a better term, all the agencies represented here provide that safety net for all the folks who need those services. You know, you may have two agencies providing similar services. When you have mentoring services, I don't think you can have enough mentors. The young man who spoke tonight, I want to commend you and just let you know how much you're appreciated and valued for what you're doing. We need that and you cannot do that enough. So, there's no duplication in mentoring because there's so many kids out there, as my colleague mentioned, Councilman Balls, that need that support. I work in the correction field, so when we have guys in our program, when we talk to them, we find out it started at an early age where they got off track, okay? Didn't have that father, didn't have that policeman in the neighborhood who could talk to them and they could see, didn't have those role models in the neighborhood, you know, engaging them to help them, you know, maintain a focus to do those things that they need to do. So, the unfortunate part about the block grant is just not enough money to go around. And I know the decision to make, the determination who gets those dollars is, I think, is very, very nerve-wracking, I would say. I've been to a lot of those programs in the past and I know it takes a lot of energy and effort to make sure that you look at the facts, look at the data and you make the decision. And then when we vote on it, there's always going to be someone unhappy. I do also would like to echo the comments made about the situation with CAC. That program being in the neighborhood for over 50 years, you know, hopefully, there could be a remedy, talking to them and working through some processes to get them back on track because we need that service in Saginaw County. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. Try to keep my many comments. First of all, I want to start off only because, I guess, my passion. I'd like to give our thoughts and our prayers to our neighboring community of Bay City. With an officer being shot reminds us of how close that can be and every day, whether it's the public safety officers, the firefighters or whatever, the danger they face every day and even in our community. So, our thoughts go out to the Bay City officer, his family and that department for that, with that. Also, Brenda, I'm sorry about the loss of your mom, but boy, she sure has put in you the passion that she had for this city is well founded in you, Brendan. You're going to keep that going on for many years. Mr. Barello, sorry about the loss of your father. I think I did get a chance to meet the next young little attorney to maybe in a few years. You never know. I mean, boy, I'll tell you. But our condolences to you also. Human Planning Commission, it's a no-win, but thank you very much, very much, for all the work that you put into that. And also to the staff that works with that, that works with the Human Planning Commission. There's a lot of work to that. And I know we had some passionate speeches tonight and very rightfully so. And so, we're very concerned with that and we'll, council will have to make their decision here in just a little bit for that. So, thank you very much. I had a chance to address the citizens of Saginaw today at noon. The question of the day is, "What are you doing about this snowstorm?" So, and it always is and bless itself. I was informed that on Sunday, everybody that could come in, came in. Mr. Phil Carwatt had everyone in. They worked them 16 hours. He can't work them over 16 hours because the law prohibits that. So, they worked a constant 16 hours, went home, got some rest, much-needed, went out. The good news is that I heard that Mr. Phil Carwatt rode in the snowplow trucks. The bad news, Brenda, is I think he was going down your street. So, I think he might have been in the truck that went down your street. So, thank you for the, all the staff people for the career fair. That was not just only for the police and fire, but it was also for the other services that we have open here in the city. We talked about the ordinance officers and we talked about the parking and so forth. So, that was great for that. City council members, I would City council members, I would like to formally extend to you an invitation to buy your breakfast this Thursday morning, 7:00 a.m. at the Dow Event Center. That is the State of the City and State of the County address, and it would be my privilege to introduce each and every one of you to this vast audience that we will have on that day. So, please, if your schedule will allow, please join us. And I know city staff is going to be there also for the State of the City and County address. And when you're not there, that allows me an opportunity to say about anything I want. So, you might want to be there just to make sure it goes well with that. I'm asking everyone to be there at 6:59, just to make sure it's 7:00. 7:00. And you have between now and Thursday to check with the chamber to make sure that my time is correct, but I believe it's 7:00. They would gather and come if maybe later, so, okay? So, I'll check that out. I'm not done. No, I'm, excuse me, I got, how many more minutes do I have yet? I have 10 seconds? Well, I certainly want to take all my 10 seconds here so that we could go right on to our next order of business. But with that, thank you very much. Adam Clark?
... Reports from the manager.
Good evening, council. And the, I believe the doors open at 7:00, and the presentations begin at 7:30, so, on Thursday morning at the Dow Event Center. I just wanted to announce at this time that Yolanda Jones and her staff, as we know, do a great job with all of our work in the Office of Management and Budget. And once again, the Government Finance Officers Association had announced that the City of Saginaw received the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its budget. The award represents a significant achievement by the city. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. In order to receive the award, the entity has to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well the entity's budget serves as a policy document, financial plan, operations guide, and a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive the award. So, congratulations to Yolanda again. I think... I don't think I remember a year that I've been here that she hasn't gotten that award for her budget, so I think it's probably at least seven years in a row. So, congratulations. A number of you mentioned the Public Safety Career Fair. I think that was, that was a great event, and it was very crowded in here every time that I went by. Beth Church coordinated it, and I think it was a great idea. Both of our police chief and fire chief and their staffs were very involved. John Stempel was very involved. The mayor is correct, it wasn't just police and fire, it was parking enforcement, environmental, and even Phil's area had some applications taken in. Beth will probably mention a few more details about it, but the career fair resulted in 103 applications.
Wow.
And I think mostly local, so I think she has more data on that, that she can update council with when she gives her update tonight. I wanted to mention to council, a young individual who came to the DDA meeting last week, he is an Eagle Scout, or he's an Eagle Scout candidate, and his project is beautifying the Jibway Island. And he is trying to raise $5,000, and he's at about $900 right now. So, his name is Alex Prendler. So, he's looking for assistance, and I know the DDA director and the DDA administrative staff has the information, if you're interested. I think Councilwoman Bench probably received it. So, I thought that was very impressive, and he's in, part of the troop that's here in the city. So, that was a nice thing, he had a speech all prepared. So, maybe we can get him to come to council at some point as he continues his project. At the last citywide meeting, a number of the citizens asked that we publicize the meetings more, so we're going to work on doing that in the manager's office. And I think we're going to make sure we give the mayor a heads-up for his question of the day, where maybe he can get a little bit of a comment in there about the neighborhood citywide meetings, and if all of you can spread the word about that as well. It is well-attended, I think, usually more than 30 citizens, but I think it's good for the public to know that that's a place where you have access to a lot of city staff members and council members. Councilman Tibbs, I think, is there almost every meeting, and Councilman Cloris both as well. And we have, usually have fire inspections, police, and I always attend those as well. So, it's one of the times when you can ask almost any question about the city and get an answer right there or get the contact. So, it's a great opportunity. Again, then, I would thank council for the strategic planning session that we had on Saturday. I think it was productive, as well as Councilwoman Moore mentioned. And specifically, thank Yolanda Jones and Phil Carwatt and Tom Miller for their presentations. And glad we had an opportunity to review last year's strategic planning session and what we've done and been able to do and what we still need to work on. I think it was Councilwoman Moore who said at that meeting that we don't want a document that we just put on the shelf and don't do anything with. So, we'll continue to monitor that and keep working on the things that we still need to do more with. And I just wanted to also give a congratulations to Phil and his staff on the snow removal. I know they were already getting a lot of the local streets this evening. He was texting me last night, so I know he was on top of it on Sunday as well. And as the mayor mentioned, they worked as many hours as they could Sunday, and they came right back in as soon as they could this morning, I think at 5:00 a.m. And there is an item on the agenda tonight, so related to that, they're doing all that with just nine plow trucks. That's all we have right now, so. Better and newer trucks will make us more efficient. So, that's why it's on there, and that's why we are trying to find ways where we can purchase those trucks without a huge capital investment to begin with.
You didn't order the snow, but just...
You know, I mentioned to Andre that we'll do everything we can to make sure we don't get snow like that again.
Oh, right.
And also, I would thank the Human Planning Commission. A number of you mentioned all the hard work that they do, and I know they do put in a lot of hours. They're usually in here, meeting several times and discussing and interviewing, so I thank them for all the work they do as well. And I also wanted to thank the staff, Letitia Trevino, Kena Franklin, Yolanda Jones, and Matt Lane, all were at all of the meetings and there to answer questions about HUD and about the city's process and the process that they set up this year. So, I think they all put a lot of hours into it as well and provided a lot of information for the Planning Commission, as well as the groups that applied for funding this year. As the mayor Protem said, it's, the way that the funding is awarded is not a reflection on the organizations. I'm sure the Planning Commission would like to fund every organization as well as council would, and same with our city services. I'm sure every council member and I would like to have a lot more services that the city provides as well, but it's all tied to how much funding we have, and we have to weigh the different services offered. So, I thank them for the work that they do and the staff as well. And finally, the land bank in Saginaw is, I think, even doing better than the half-price homes. They are giving homes to Houseback Pickle, I think Tom mentioned that, who is then investing funds for their employees who are traditionally renters in the city of Saginaw. So, that's helping them be homeowners and keeping them in the city, taxpayers and property owners. So, that's a great thing that they're doing, and we are looking at ways that we can expand that. Tom Miller mentioned that some other businesses are interested in it. Councilman Clock has been reviewing this for probably well more than a year. So, we're looking at ways that we can expand that. The problem with the, not a problem, but just the fact with the land bank houses is that sometimes, as you know, the process for a house to get through to the land bank is a three-year process based on taxes owed. So, many times, these houses are vacant for three years before the land bank gets them. In a lot of cases, the houses aren't ones that anyone would purchase and put money into due to the fact that maybe they've been stripped of all of the copper or the wiring or there's a leak in the roof. So, we're trying to think of new ways to get that out there, councilmen, and I think the more companies that we can get involved, the better. But as Tom has mentioned a few times, Houseback Pickle is kind of a pioneer in that, and so I think you'll see some success stories coming out of that program soon, and it'll be, hopefully, help us continue that with other companies and perhaps we can get more involved with what Councilman Clock has been working on. Okay. And I'm going to bring up Dave Youngstrom, who is principal and regional audit director for Yo &amp; Yo, and he is in charge of the city audit and has a staff that's here for quite some time during the fall. And as I mentioned at our planning session, the audit was submitted, the audit was submitted on time. We just, we're waiting for a good council meeting to give the presentation because we had some other presentations lined up. So, with that, I'll let Dave get started.
Well, good evening, and thank you. I'm happy to... Yo &amp; Yo, I'm Dave Youngstrom with Yo &amp; Yo here in the city. I'm Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and city council. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys. This is our third year working with the city. We are growing and continue to expand in the city, so it's kind of exciting to hear some of the positive things that are going on. I did put together a overview of the audit, just for your benefit, because the document itself is pretty long. Okay, everybody have it? So, one of the things we talk about as an audit, we're going to talk about the numbers tonight. We also talk about some of the things we look at during the audit is our internal controls, as well as our compliance with our federal awards and things like that. I'd like to thank the manager and all their staff, Ms. Jones and their staff as well, for all their help, because we could not be here without them, and all the work that they do to get us to this point. Everything was submitted on time to the state of Michigan again this year with no issues. I'll talk about some of that stuff as well, but overall, at the end of the day, we are issuing what's called an unmodified opinion, meaning there are no modifications necessary to the financial statements that you see. So, a clean audit, that's what you're looking for from your auditor, and that's what we give you. So, I will start, I've got a kind of overview of our major funds, and I'm going to start with our general fund. The first slide, number two there is our general fund revenues. You can see it's about $30.6 million this year. That's down about $1.5 million from a year ago, or about 5%. The general fund accounts is a governmental funding accounting, which means it does not record debt, it does not record your capital items. So, it's all expenditure-based. So, that's a difference between what we do in the business type when I talk about water sewer, that's a little bit different, just so you understand. And then, you budget differently, because you budget for all the capital costs over time and pay for all the full debt payments right out of that fund, if you will. So, just looking at our pie chart, our intergovernmental revenue went up 2% this year, which is a little bit of increased money from the state of Michigan, which is nice to see. I kind of feel like government's got a little bit this year for the first time in a long time at least. Our grants and contributions were down about 1%. Our fines and forfeitures were up about 1. Licenses and permits were pretty flat, as well as other revenue. Our income taxes actually went up a little bit this year, about $50,000, up 2%. And our property taxes, though the dollar amount did not necessarily increase, was up 1%. We, I hear you talk a little bit about some of the charge-back for property taxes, the three-year waiting period and some of that stuff. Well, the county charges us back for some of those property taxes, and a year ago, they charged us back $650,000. Last year was only $125,000, so that kind of increased the tax revenue a little bit in the grand scheme of things. And as you see, the revenues are less. Last year, the general fund received a transfer from the self-insurance fund last year, which was a one-time transfer to kind of move some money back to the general fund, about $1.5 million, so that number dropped about 5%. So, overall, our revenue, of course, is shrinking a little bit. You can see that in the next chart, page, slide three. And just kind of see the steady trend from 2011 down to 2014. 2011 was the biggest year we had, and we had a lot of grants that year. There's a lot of pass-through grants that we had that year that kind of peaked that number up. And then, in 2012, slowed decline. 2013 was down $1,500,000, like we talked about earlier in the revenue side. The next slide, four. So, where did our money go? What do we spend our money on? Our general fund expenditures and transfers was just over $29.7 million this year. That was down 3.3 million from a year ago, almost 11%. Down $6 million from 2011, just as a point of reference. And one of the things we talk about is, you look at public safety being the largest piece, we're spending 60% of our dollars in public safety, and that's just our general fund, not counting our other funds that we do have. So, some of that decrease is basically not filling staffing positions, changes to benefits, and some of the things that go along with that. Overall, public safety was down about 3% this year in total, as was administration, and general government was up about 1%, and community services were up about 1% as well. So, I think we've got a, hopefully got a good point where we're controlling expenditures now, and we'll talk about that a little bit as you see the next couple of slides. You can really see that steep drop in their expenditures on slide number five, and hopefully, again, we've stabilized to where we're at a good point moving forward and kind of living within our means, because we were at a scary low point about a year ago. If you remember back, we had just about $300,000 of fund balance, and that was it. Slide six. I think this kind of paints the best picture you can see. The blue line, which is revenues, the red line, which is expenditures, the last three years, we've been spending more dollars and spent ourselves down to the $300,000, $268,000 actually, which really was a half-day of operations. So, with the money we put back in this year, we have just over $1 million in assigned fund balance this year, which again, gives you a lot of credit for making those tough decisions and not being able to get ourselves in a position where we have 13 days of operations in our fund balance. Still not a whole lot. But again, for the first time in four years, we've moved the needle in the right direction. We've reacted to some of the things, we try to do the best we can to provide the services to our citizens, but we have to balance that with being able to do that for the ongoing thing. You see all the things that are going on around the state with deficits, not in just this city, but in cities south of us, there's a lot of challenges, and I'm glad we're not going in that direction. So, I give you a lot of credit for making hard decisions. Any questions on the general fund? Take a look at the water fund. I'm sorry, Mr. Force.
I'm looking at general fund revenues on page three.
Yes, sir.
What happened to, what happened in 2012 where there's a tremendous spike in expenditures as opposed to the revenues? Can you give me an idea of just what happened that period of time?
Yeah, I believe we received some grant revenues in 2011. I was auditing you back then, but in 2011, you can see the revenue on page three was a lot higher, and in 2012, we expended those funds, is what it looks like to me. Okay? I think it's when we got the, I think the stabilization grants came in that way, I believe, but...
Thank you.
Okay, and slide seven. So, this is our water fund, which is an enterprise or business-type fund, which means they charge for services, charge for water services and charge for expenditures. And what it's expected to do is it's supposed to, the revenue should almost always exceed the expenditures, because we have to fund for ongoing maintenance of the system and supposed to be continuing the operation in a positive direction. So, we have that... So we have that asset that's been, many of them are very, very old, of course, and they take like a lot of maintenance. Last year was a real tough year in the water fund, a lot of main breaks and things like that. But you can see that number creeped up this year to be pretty close. The water fund, again, has had four years. It's been operating where it should. That gap is getting a little closer and I just say, you know, keep an eye on that number, take a look at that and make sure we're charging enough to be able to maintain our system that we're doing. So we're doing a good job in the water fund. We've done it for four years and been in a good position with that fund. Take a look at the next slide. The sewer fund has had a nice run too, up until 2014. Had four very good years where the revenues were exceeding the expenditures and in this year, they actually, the expenditures trickled over the revenues this year for the first time since 2009. So again, just something to keep an eye on. You need to make sure we have enough reserves in there to maintain the system and we don't want that trend to keep spiking. We need to kind of level those off. And that's all the financial data I'm going to cover tonight. We can go back at any point if there's questions. Yes, sir.
On the liabilities on here?
I have that on a later slide. I can show, I have those to talk about if you want to look at.
Okay.
I'll mention that in a minute.
Okay.
Okay? So the next slide is one of the things we're required to do as an audit. We kind of evaluate your internal control system, understand how it operates and we look for things, a system continues to operate and you guys have a very good system here. So for example, when we bring internal control items up to you as a council member, I would want to know what have we done to fix what we brought up a year ago? And that's a good example of that. We did have a, in 2013, we did have a material weakness related to a prior period adjustment for some classification of deferred revenue. Didn't really impact your general fund, but in fact impacted your overall statements. That was fixed this year and we had no issues with it again. So the system found that. We found it last year during the audit. We reported it and it was fixed, just like these. So we got a couple of items this year, a couple of material weaknesses. These are weaknesses in the system that if it was not fixed, could cause material misstatements. We didn't find any items that we would consider reporting to you, but one of the things was reconciliation and adjusting journal entries. When we start the audit, we get a trial balance. There were a lot of entries that came up after the fact this year and they were significant enough to have it reported in here. I fully expect that we won't have that next year because our system's going to be operating as it is. We brought it to your attention as well, as well as management, and I know they're going to be taking steps to correct that. We also had a prior period adjustment this year that we had to do related to deferred revenue receivables. Our accounts receivable was too high in our community development fund and our deferred revenue was too high. No effect of the bottom line, the numbers were just really large and it impacts everything. I expect, again, I expect not to have that issue again next year, but that's something I would look at and I'll bring it back to you next year when I'm sitting up here, how do we do? And that's how you evaluate those things. Material weaknesses and significant deficiencies are things that you really need to have addressed and we'll talk about something about that in a little bit. We did have no significant deficiencies in controls that we noted, so it's a good system. Again, we'll correct those. And the last piece of internal controls we look at are what we call management comments. These are just little things we found along the way that say, you know what, it'd be nice to fix these. They're opportunities to strengthen the system we already have in place and they're kind of little things that we can do to make our system a little bit better. So they're not, if not corrected, they may become deficiencies down the road, but it's just something like that. We had five a year ago. We had a credit card policy we didn't have, that's been adopted. We had an electronic transfer payment policy, that's been adopted. Outstanding checks is still an issue this year. We had an issue with physical inventory a year ago that we had to, we wanted to make sure it was counted better and accounted for a little better in the water fund and that was handled this year. Well done there. And then we had a deficit in some of our funds. And I'll talk about that in a little bit because it's still an issue this year, but it's vastly improved. So outstanding checks is the first one for the 2014 audit. Outstanding items greater than yours should be remitted to the state in compliance with the laws. We just got some outstanding items in our bank racks that we need to make sure we can get those over to the state and so they can be issued to the state appropriately. Not a material amount, but just some things that we saw out there. Our deficit fund balances this year, we had three funds a year ago that were in deficit. Community development fund was a $1.6 million deficit a year ago, under $1 million this year, so a $600,000 improvement. Our local law enforcement fund was $128,000 in deficit a year ago. It's $20,000 in deficit this year. Made up $100,000 in that fund this year. And Celebration Park had $128,000 deficit. It is out of deficit. So lots of progress, you know, you can't fix it all in a day, but we're making progress in the right direction. An area on the grant side, we'll talk about grants in a minute, the federal grants. When we test the federal grants, there's what's called question costs or findings. These internal control items are just little things in the system. Accounting for recipient dollars, things like that, making sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. And we have a lot of grant dollars that come through the organization and we just need to make sure we tighten up those controls a little bit and make sure we're, making sure we're doing all the things we should be doing with those grant dollars. And the last one is related to budget amendments. I'll echo that. Budget award is tremendous. That is a lot of work that goes into that. We did have some significant variances this year from our budget to actual, which is our expenditure side. Just need to take a look at that a little bit more periodically throughout the years as our recommendation is. Nothing significant on that. So if I can, I'll talk about our compliance.
Question from Councilman Clark.
Yes, sir.
What's your grant society and who controls those grants? I mean, what's the issues? I mean, are they going somewhere they shouldn't be going or...
Nope, there's, if we had that, we'd have it in the compliance section. It's just, again, I think one of the issues we came through with was some of the grant requests didn't have all the supporting documentation attached to it at the time. We were able to go through that and try to track it down after the fact, but we just need to make sure that, for example, that information is there in an appropriate place and doesn't have to be dug for and looked for. It needs to have a systematic place, system in place that catches all those little things that we don't want to have turn into a, when an audit comes in from the agency, we don't want to have any issues with that.
So after you got through during your audit, all the requirements was in compliance after the fact, after you checked it out?
Yep, there was no material non-compliance with any of the grants.
Okay.
Again, I just think we need to do a little, few little things to tighten that up a little bit, maybe make some changes internally.
Okay.
Okay? So in our compliance, we received over $4 million in federal awards this year. That's down quite a bit. Our NSP grant went from $7.3 million a year ago to just under $300,000 this year. So I mean, that grant's going away. That was a big drop. We did get the SAFER grant, which this year, we spent a million dollars on that. We received a million dollars for that grant as well. So in each of these grants, there's 14 compliance areas, talking, addressing your question. We look at 14 different ways that they have us audit those programs in each program and they're different. And we tested all those and we had no findings in either program. The SAFER program, which is a brand-new program, which is usually high-risk, had no issues with that program at all. So I give a lot of credit for that, that part of it. So nothing to report in our single audit to the federal clearinghouse. My last slide I always like to talk about is where, you know, things, we had a pretty good year this year. Things kind of went our way a little bit in the general fund especially. And there's still other challenges out there we're all pretty aware of. I know you had a strategic plan, you probably touched on a lot of these. Personal property tax has been a big issue, obviously. We're supposed to get that money from the state, but it's not, it's not written in the law like we probably like. So that's always a risk. We've got to be aware about that. Our fund balance, improving in the general fund, about still 13 days of operations, not very long. Our escalating healthcare costs, though it wasn't a great increase this year, we still paid $11.1 million in health insurance claims this year, which is a lot of money. Increase in retirement costs, our legacy costs continue to hit. I paid over $15 million this year in retirement costs. Big dollars. Our DAX base stabilizing a little, the charge backs were better. You know, that's a hit or miss thing for us every year. You don't know what you're going to get hit with. No funding for infrastructure and replacement of old buildings and equipment. Our systems are getting older, our buildings are getting older, our roads are getting older. The age of our system is significant and you're not alone. Most communities are facing these issues. And then we have our legacy costs, our unfunded, other, OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, that's health insurance, post-retirement health there. $220 million is what that is. $54 million is recognized on our books right now. So there's still, the way they account for that is a little bit every year, it keeps adding back up. So that number's 220 when we were looking at those real dollars. And then our unfunded pension obligations for our MERS program, which is the majority of our employees, about $75 million and our police to fire at 68. So real, real big dollars there. I think that addresses your question, your concern. It's just, it's everywhere in the state. People are looking to figure out how to address these dollars and it's challenging. So we've got a lot of challenges ahead of us because all those dollars are going to have to be paid someday. And that's what I have for you today. I thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Being Nun, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Question, I'm sorry? We do have a question.
Thank you for the information. Just a question in terms of the...
Fund balance, 13 days of operation. Typically, city our size, I think you mentioned we should have at least what?
10%.
10%?
Okay.
10% of general fund?
So that would be...
We should have about 3%.
3%. Okay. So you're too short on that one, right? Okay, and then the, another follow-up question, Mr. Mayor. On the unfunded liability obligations in the MERS, in terms of the retirement costs, projecting three years down the road, I think we had $75 million right now, you said?
Yep.
And then, that's on the OPEB, but $220 million from the pension liabilities, obligations, right? 220, you said?
220 is the OPEB.
Okay, OPEB.
Yeah, 220 is OPEB, 75 and 68 are the unfunded.
Okay. So 220, oh, 55, 54 million on the books, right?
Yep.
So...
That is, yeah.
Tracking 3, 5, 10, 15.
You know, the hard part is that, you know, they have these, the actuaries that do these calculations, they have all these assumptions they use and some of them are really big numbers like, you know, 6, 7, 8% of return, rate of return. Now, we've had a pretty good market the last couple of years, but I'm hoping that, I'm hoping next year's going to be a little better. We had another good year in the market because they're still measuring a year ago and this year hasn't been, it's been pretty good, all things considered. But that has such a big impact. The other impact you have, though, is you have fewer employees paying in.
Okay.
And so that's driving up the rate. That's why that MERS hill is pretty hard to climb because you have fewer, fewer employees are paying in to that thing and so that makes the rate continue to go up. School teachers are paying 30-some percent for their pension right now. I mean, so it's, again, you're not alone in that area. I mean, I guess if nothing changes, I would expect it to continue to rise. And hopefully the market, the market return will help stabilize some of that for the next couple of years, hopefully. But I can't project that, unfortunately. But that's my guess.
I'm not sure if you're, you may not be aware, I'm not sure how far you are involved with our MERS transferring. Is he...
He's aware of it, but he's not involved.
He's not involved, okay. Okay, so that's another question for somebody else on that one.
In the, the, the transfer to MERS, it, you still don't decrease your liabilities. You still have the same unfunded liabilities. What you do is you, what we have projected from MERS is a greater rate of return, so you reduce your annual required contribution.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman Clark.
A question for the manager. 10% is the recommended fund balance of our fund? $3 million?
FOA's recommendations for general fund balance would be...
What is our current balance today?
Would be 10 to 15%, so it'd be $3 million or more. With this on the current, we have fund balance, beginning of '14 was 268.81 and is 1.527.
How much? I'm sorry.
1.527 is the fund balance end of the year.
1.527 million?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Ball.
The retirees' contracts, you know, with the healthcare, if we get those things aligned where...
Most retirees is down to one or two retirement plans. Can you project how much more that would help out our general balance?
Well, when we looked at that... And made the change, at that time, you know, subsequently, the city was served a lawsuit, so we didn't make the change, but at that time, it would have saved, I believe it's $2 to $3 million a year. I think it was $3 million a year on the high side.
So, I don't know, the public know or all the retirees know or not, but if we put them all in one or two particular retirement plans, wouldn't it make some of the plans better than some of the people got right now, the retirees?
Some of the plans, I believe, would be better. I didn't look, I don't know all of the plans we have because we have, I believe, in excess of 20, Dennis? 26 healthcare plans right now.
We got 26 healthcare plans.
Yes. Some plans, if we, you know, it depends on what you'd change them to, but I believe there are some that would be a better plan even if they switch to what actives have at this point.
Well, I wish the media would report that, you know, that it was, if we can get them all in one plan, it could help the city out a whole lot. You know, let them know the pros and cons of all having one particular plan, you know? Don't give them all the doom and gloom, let them know it's going to be great. I mean, because it is going to be great. I mean, if they get the programs they got now, better than the ones they used to have. Am I right or wrong?
Well, it depends on what particular benefit you're talking about.
Ask me. Go ahead, ask me. I'll tell you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Vandenmark.
I have a question for our city manager. At our, at our in-service we went to, you gave us a five-year projection. Is that based on this?
The number with a five-year projection was updated with the current audit. So it is this audit, yes, that's presented is what is the base year. So you base it on the last actual year that you have. Then projections are based upon what we would foresee occurring for the most part if we didn't have any changes. But as I mentioned, we've even made changes since that are incorporated into that, like we talked about the change for POAM to MERS and which, which will affect, you know, that projection, it reduces, reduces your ARC, so it would reduce your expenditures annually.
Councilman Clark.
In your statistics with other communities, how would you rate us as to the percentage of our general fund that we are paying for insurance? Our insurance expense percentage of our general fund? How would you compare that with other communities? Are we even? Are we above? Are we below?
Yeah, I think in some cases, versus a premium-based, so you guys are self-insured for health, you guys are self-insured for health insurance? So I think that immediately saves you some dollars right off the bat by being self-insured. There's obviously more risk and we have stop-loss insurance with that. So I would say you're in a better position based on some of the premium-based ones. I have others that are self-insured that are, I would say, pretty similar to what you're doing. Pretty similar. I mean, a lot of the benefits are the same, a lot of the legacy costs are the same in a lot of municipalities and any municipality you go to. So I think we're pretty consistent when we compare the self-insurance part of it, but against the cities that I work with and even some of the townships that have the premium-based, I think you're doing better off as a percentage.
Thank you. Councilman Ball.
I want a question for the city manager and for you. Normally what happens if a city go bankruptcy where emergency manager come here and they break all the contracts, do they get rid of all the health insurance programs or can they do that?
For local units. So it's different than it used to be when an emergency manager could come in and do that. I believe there's three options under the state law now. So if you look at Detroit, Detroit went with bankruptcy rather than just an emergency manager. So what the, they, so then you have an administrator, which was Kevin Orr, an attorney, he would attorney, he would make recommendations, and he worked with the unions, and then it goes to the judge at that point. So, ultimately, in those cases, the judge decides, but you do have to balance it out. And in Detroit, pensions were reduced by, I think, they had two levels. Public safety pensions were reduced by one level, other employees were reduced by a different level. I'm not sure, they, they may know if they, I don't know that, if they made changes in healthcare, I would assume they did, but I didn't read anything about that.
I think they have the authority to do anything in the pension stuff that they can do in that area as well.
I'm just saying, it seemed like it would be better for the retirees to come in and discuss this, so they don't lose everything, you know, instead of losing some, you know, we can get one or two plans. It would help them out in the long run, because you wouldn't end up in this predicament where we paying seventy-five percent of revenue that comes in, we paying that towards retirees, healthcare, and for their pensions. You know, if it breaks the city, then I mean, they're gonna be broke eventually.
It's a big stick, and you know what? What you negotiate compared to what you might not ever have in the future, that's tough, that's a tough negotiation, but yeah, that's, that could, that's, that could happen. So, we talked a year ago when we were down to three-hundred thousand, and we don't want to go in there. We don't even talk about the reporting that goes along with that, not even just having the manager in here, the reporting that goes in there, the control you lose, that's not any fun.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead. Mr. Manager, I would just speak for you, and maybe Dave may add in, but at some point, there's gonna be a breaking point here. I mean, looking at, these numbers are staggering, okay? They're staggering, so at, at one point in time, you know, the, the two emerging mountains were meeting, there's gonna be a big clash here. So, in terms of survival, look at the retirement costs we're paying, we're just keeping up with them, look at our, our, our fund balance, you know, we're at half of that. Our declining tax base is, is a challenge, as you have here, which we all know is pretty general across the state and across the country. So, my concern is a breaking point, and I haven't heard much about that, and you know, that's, I was kind of looking for, when I, when I asked for the five-year projection, I was trying to see, at one point, at what point will we be at, at a, at a state where we have to make some really, we've made a lot of tough decisions, but there's, eventually, we're gonna have to make some, some, some more tough decisions. For example, we have our general fund budget, sixty percent, obviously, page four, public safety. There's gonna be a breaking point where we're not gonna be able to afford that. That's reality. We're not gonna be able to afford it. We're not. At, at our current base, our current revenue stream, we, we are fortunate enough to get the, some grants and some other revenue to supplement that, but at some point, we're not gonna be able to afford it. So, then, we will have to, our future councils will have to make some, some very, very, very tough decisions.
I, I give you a lot of credit for having a five-year projection. That's where you start. You start looking at that and say, what do we have to do to mitigate this? We're looking at not just next year and the year after, we're looking at, hey, where are we gonna be half a decade from now? And that's hard to do with revenues not guaranteed.
Fluctuating, right.
You're, you're trying to do the best you can, but you at least have a starting point with that, and then you can see that rubber hits the road, it's, it's gonna come, it's only a matter of time.
Right.
Because we're not getting that much more money from anybody.
Yeah, I think, I think what, when you look at your forecasts and what you can do, you have to look at expenditure control is, because you're probably not going to change revenues a great deal.
Right.
You're not gonna, the state is gonna give you what they give you from, from revenue sharing based upon taxes they collect. We, we have the ability through economic development to increase our income tax, and that has been increasing. Property taxes, we have the tax cap regardless of what our, what our limits are. So, you look at expenditure control, and that's where, you know, Councilman Ball keeps bringing up the healthcare. I mean, think of, we have a, we have a thirty, approximately thirty million dollar general fund budget. Now, all of the savings that we would get from that aren't all in the general fund, but say if you saved three million dollars, even if half of it is, that's a significant decrease. A million and a half dollars in your expenditures, and then you make changes in your pension plans. I mean, if you, if you could get that in healthcare, which we're not, we're at a particular stage with that, but you're looking at additional decreases in your annual contribution of changing from police and fire pension board to MERS for the POAM is seven-hundred thousand dollars. So, what, that's what we have to look at, is what are ways that we can decrease those expenditures? And remember, when you decrease an expenditure like that, it's every year. So, it compounds upon itself, and then you start to put money away, you know, it's, and Dave can probably comment on this, they do audits in a wide range of school districts and cities. Everybody is pretty much in the same situation for, for OPEB costs, so those liabilities are high everywhere and across the country, but other places, when you look at long-term planning, some places have millions of dollars set aside for capital costs, and we don't have that. That's when you start to look at that. You know, you talk about the breaking point for, for the budget, and where you can spend, you can't spend anymore, we also have to look at, what's the breaking point for this building here? We have no money set aside for this building, and I know Phil can, can show you probably twelve million dollars in improvements that need to be made, so what do you do if you don't have any money set aside and this building starts to fail? So, there, there are a lot of issues that you have to think of, and I think council and the administrative team here does a good job of, of getting out in front of those and doing what we can based upon the dollars that we have. But it is a lot, you have to look at the long-term ways to reduce those costs. You're right.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Councilman, just a second.
Yes, one of the recommendations that you have, at the very last page on your, in your write-up, budget amendments. Boy, it seems to me like we've, you know, since I've been sitting here, is just every single year, we've increased the number of budget amendments throughout the year that we've, that we've done. Now, you're saying we aren't doing it enough. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I think what, what you're looking at, I'm sorry.
What, what you're looking at is, when you get to your page in the audit, you'll see budgeted amounts, actual versus original budget, final budget, which is all the amendments and actual, that's page three-eleven. You wanna get those, you wanna get your final as close to actual as possible, so that the council can have a clear picture of, of where you stand throughout the year. So, Dave mentioned our expenditures, you know, there's a, there's a gap there in what we, the amendments that we did and the final actual, about two-point-two million dollars. So, for us, it's probably, for the city, is just that we need to, when we get closer to the end of the year, maybe do a little bit more projections on what we see coming in for healthcare and, and those expenditures, and reduce the expenditure budget down. We do a very good job of our amendments and of when we getting new money in and when we're changing things, but that's just kind of a year-end type thing that we, we need to get better at doing. And I think, we've been working on that, and that's why you've seen more, because Yolanda's doing those quarterly, so that's kind of a year-end type of adjustment that we should be making near period twelve.
Yeah.
Although your, your final statement here, your final sentence here is, "We recommend the city complete more frequent budget amendments throughout the year as necessary to align revenues and expenditures and maintain a strong financial position." I'm assuming that has to do with state law, right? You're, you're just saying that in order to be really, really compliant.
You're not, if it was a state law violation, we'd probably have it as a finding. It, you are under budget, and the law says you can't spend over your budget amount, so that's, that's the law, the Budgeting Act says that. But the, really, the crux of our thing is, you know, there was a difference of about one-point-two million dollars at the end, and it's, a lot of it is because we don't start the audit till really the first of October almost, and you're, you're amending your budget in, what was it, June, May or June, and doing all those projections at that point. A lot of things happen between there. You don't, you don't have your experience, and your healthcare is a big piece of that, and your self-insurance, you know what, some of yours is, we're self-insured for a lot of things, too, not just healthcare, workers' compensation and general liabilities. So, you, you have a lot of other factors, and you have to budget for those in the front end, and you don't always know where they're gonna be at June thirtieth, but we think it's important enough to at least, hey, let's take a look at this and try to get that number to be a little closer.
Okay, so, what is your recommendation? It says, "We recommend that the city complete more frequent." What would be more frequent?
More frequent, to, as frequent as you need to be to make those numbers be a lot closer at the end of the year.
So, Yolanda's got a, you've got more work to do, right? So, yeah.
So, to be proactive, we're bringing a budget adjustment monthly to you to adjust.
All right.
Councilman Tibbs?
I was thinking, I remember at last meeting, you said that it was part of the agenda to meet with the state rep and state senate. I believe, trying to think of what city it was, but there was a state rep and a state senate who was trying to create a bill in which similar cities and similar situations were gonna pool their, this unfunded liability. It hasn't been in the, in the press recently, but maybe that's something we can, you know, as a resident, I can call my state rep and state senate as well, but that was a possible resolution to these issues that the municipalities were having.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty complicated in the fact that the mayor and I went to an MML event that was working with the, the governor's office on looking at things like that, and it was a pooling and a bonding by the state. I think one of the issues with that is, I think it would require a change in state law and possibly a vote of the people. So, you would have to ask people, do you, if you're in a local unit that doesn't have the problem, are you gonna vote? Because you, ultimately, you put the state in the, the vote of, of bonding for it, and if the state bonds for it, then they're on the hook if you don't make your payments. And so, it's something that's still being thought of, but we went to that meeting, mayor, probably a year ago. Yeah, so, I haven't heard anything new about it either, but the mayor, mayor pro tem, and I have a meeting with our state senator and, and rep, I think it's in about a week or two weeks, so we'll...
Next Friday.
Next Friday, so we can, that's something we can talk to them about, ways to reduce that.
This would be a time where, I guess, our urban corps used to exude more influence in state politics, it seems that somebody wrote in, but maybe that's something we can look into.
Yeah, the mayor is part of the urban corps mayors as well.
We're, you know, this is the same thing. When we sat down with the urban corps mayors, this, what, what you're hearing right here is exactly what we hear from Jackson, and we hear it from all over the place, Lansing, Jackson, you, you name it, it's all over. It's the same thing, and so, different name of city, same problem. Any other questions, council members?
Just a final comment, Ms. Mayor, if I may. Just in closing, I, you know, just, you know, these things are very apparent to us, you know, we're looking at it all the time, it's very apparent to the city manager, but Saginaw as it, as a whole, I think we've done quite well, looking at the, the state trend, the national trend, you know, seven years running, receiving just a prestigious financial award for fiscal responsibility. So, you know, I think we've been able to maintain a, a level of equilibrium, but eventually, you know, we gotta, we gotta reduce expenditures and make some adjustments, et cetera, like we've been doing. Now, we have done that, and it wasn't always popular, but it was necessary, and that's what we have to keep in mind. It may not be popular, but it's necessary. Self-preservation is, is the main preservation, meaning we wanna preserve the city and all the folks in it. So, for my colleagues, you know, there will be some other tough decisions we have to make to maintain, because there is not a, just a fresh influx of cash coming in. I don't have to have an agreement, but I know, that's a fact. There is not a fresh cachet coming into the city of Saginaw. So, you know, the manager's right, we've made those tough decisions, and looking at our budget adjustments and, you know, as Yolanda indicated, you know, getting those more frequently, you can look at, you know, what expenditure we have versus the revenues coming in, and once they presented to us, we have to make the call. You know, we just have to make the call, you know, that's, that's what we're here for. We have to do it, keep things moving forward. So, we've done that, you know, we've been recognized for it, so, but just having that forethought as we're discussing this, to see down the road, that's, that's what's important. You know, to, to not have blinders on and not be, you know, open to the, the obvious, you know, and then not looking projection-wise down the road, five, ten, fifteen years, you know, so I think we've done that, but we have to keep our eyes on, on, on what's happening on, on the state level, as the revenue's not coming from the state as we want it, want them to, right? So, you know, we have to make those tough calls. We don't want emergency manager, we haven't had that threat because of those decisions we've made, but emergency managers are all over the state of Michigan. Our former city manager is, is all over the state of Michigan. I think he's in Detroit now, right, at, at the schools, right? So, he left Flint, and he's in Detroit, and, you know, his main job is to cut, right? And, and as Councilman Ball said, yes, they can come and undo some of those contractual agreements and sever, you know, some of the agreements. So, you know, we don't want that, so, Mr. Manager, to your team, you know, you know, we've done those things, we've made those adjustments, services are being provided, we're leaner, okay? And folks expect their grass to be cut in the summer, you know, we, that's another issue, we're working on that, too. They expect the snow to be plowed, and as Councilman Moore said, they expect the trash to be picked up, just some of those basic services they expect. But when you have sixty percent of your budget going to public safety, which we all want, and then the other forty percent goes for all the other general services, including staff, okay? It just, it's just common sense. Eventually, something's gonna collide, and we just have to make some decisions before that happens. So, that concludes my comments, Ms. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Ball, question to the manager, or...
Yes, sir, to the manager, and yes. You know, he's talking about that. I mean, I, I'm thinking about giving a guy lifetime insurance for only six years worth of work, and he don't work here no more. I mean, why, how can we void that contract? I think that's a travesty to the city of Saginaw, where we give somebody lifetime insurance for six years. I think that's terrible. I don't know how he got in that predicament, how he got that money, but can we take it back? Six years for lifetime insurance?
I don't think we could. No, that's fine.
No, I think you'd have to ask your city attorney. That was a contract that was voted on by council.
City council approved.
I feel sorry for that city council that was here standing here then. That, that was a travesty to the city of Saginaw to give somebody lifetime insurance for six years. I mean, everybody living would like to have that. It don't happen. It's not fair.
Okay.
I think the city attorney should take a look and see if we can take that back. I would like to see something on that myself.
If, if I could, council, and this brings up an interesting situation. And Councilman Ball is asking for the city attorney to investigate whether we can bring that back. That's not free. That's not free, and so, I would like the consensus of the whole council, if that's something we wanna look for, because when we start asking the city attorney to investigate this, that's billing hours, and, and everything costs, and, and so, it's not like he has anything else to do, I mean, that's going to do that. So, if that's a consensus of this, of this council, I think we could do that, but I, I just, when an individual council person, I, I'd just like to have the consensus of the council before we would move on something like that, because what we're doing is, we're, we're giving direction to a city council, or to the city attorney, not through the city manager, but through the city attorney. So, I think, I, the council members, I'd be grateful if you would chime in on whether, do we, do we take that expense for that, to see, can that be null and void? I, I'm so, I'm, that's my, that, I, I need to, I need some more direction from the council, Yolanda. Councilman Floyd Clark.
As much as I understand Councilman Ball's comments and inquiry, my concern is normally contracts, the reason you have a contract is you're binding yourself to that agreement, whether you like it or not down the road, and I, I doubt if we would be able to void that contract, assuming that that, I haven't seen the contract, I wasn't here at the time, so, but that's several years ago, and it would be very unlikely we would successfully be able to break a contract like that, number one. Number two, we're talking one individual, and I can't imagine one individual's cost is so high that it would save us much money, particularly, we have to spend a lot of money trying to check it out or challenge it and all that kind of thing. So, I don't see the value in it personally, even though I agree with the sentiment.
I'd like to have you vote for that.
You, you certainly may.
Thank you very much. It may seem like it may not be enough, but when you're talking about six thousand dollars, and we don't, we don't pay the city, we don't even pay the city council twelve thousand dollars a year, and that don't seem like a mighty money, but we can give somebody that don't even work here, and I think it was unconstitutional to give somebody that kind of pay when nobody else gets it. It's not fair. I mean, so, I would think that it, it, it would be better for us to take a look at them and sit down and say, just, just take it. If that's the case, the next city manager may be... If that's the case, the next city manager may be, he might be getting his council ready to say, see if you can get him a lifetime contract after six years, who knows? I mean, if he's giving it away that way, so I think we should take a look. I'm not saying that he may not deserve it. If he gets that money back, maybe think about giving it to him after 10 years, but I just don't see, it's just unconstitutional to give people some money like that. I just don't see it, and I think that we should take a look at it. I think the citizens want us to take a look at that. That's just how I feel.
Councilman Clark.
If we do take a look at it, I think we have to direct the manager to direct the attorney. I don't believe that we can address that, and that cost would be miniscule. Andrew Borello's cost on that would be zero compared...
Are you willing to prepare a zero? Can we get a zero from the, you're saying zero?
Let's tell my friend his comments, please.
I will, I will, but I was interested in the zero part.
You want to hear the rest of the story?
Yes, please.
His compensation would be negligible compared to the lawsuit we'd be looking at. That's what I mean by zero. That lawsuit would be huge. The idea is good, I agree with you, it was too much money, it was a bad, it was a bad Not being a lawyer, we're into a contract, I don't think we can break. So I'm sorry to put you have another job, Mr. Borello, but, thank you.
We got a contract with retirees for healthcare and for their liabilities, but yet, we're going to bargain for that. We might as well throw him in the same loop with that one.
Well, then you might as well look at all the retirees, some of which are making more money than they were making when they were working, and approach all that at the same time. Can't be done.
I'm not arguing whether he should have or he shouldn't have. The procedure for requesting that the city manager, through the city manager, for the city attorney to spend billable hours to investigate something, I think that needs to come from the consensus of the whole council and not just an individual council member, because you can request that, this time, Councilman Balls, and Councilwoman Annie Bench can request that the city attorney look into something else, and it was, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, I'll bring up the LGBT one, I'll bring that up. Knowing what the vote of the city council was, should we have spent that money in the first place, knowing that the consensus of the city council was it wasn't going to pass in the first place? I mean, so those are things that I think we need to discuss at the table here before we do those kinds of, those kinds of things, and so...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I think if this is an issue, it should be brought up by motion or not brought up at all.
I'd like to know, from the attorney, if it's proper that one person could ask for you to take a look at something, that's what I would like to know.
Well, it's a good question and one that I've faced throughout my career representing municipalities, not the least of which is the city. It's an age-old question that different councils handle it different ways. Mr. Mayor is not probably elaborating too much that I raised that question, and it's only because in certain situations, you can probably, it doesn't take a lot of insight or forethought to think of situations where, you know, one council member's asking the attorney for something and another one asks, and it goes on and on and on. Simply stated, I mean, we've had a practice here where I basically, and by the way, I work for you, he's my boss, but legally, you're my client. So you can ask me, I believe, you can ask me directly, can ask me directly, I'm one of the few people other than the manager that you can ask to do something. Most of the time, I go through the manager, of course. So to answer your question, I mean, I'm okay any way you all decide. I think to be very proper and appropriate, it's, you know, it's like Councilman Clark said, if someone wants me to do an opinion, probably the right thing to do is to say, I move that we ask the city attorney for an opinion on X matter, and then you take a vote, and then I do the opinion. The other way to do it is ask the manager, and the manager says, I'll direct the city attorney to do that. Those are the two avenues I feel comfortable with. I feel less comfortable when they come individually from council members, although, again, for many, many years, that's what I've done.
You've been doing it for years, that people ask you questions and you do it, and now you feel uncomfortable? Not because I asked the question?
Well, I think, I think what it is, is that, who's asking the question? Is Councilman X or Councilwoman Y asking the question, or is the city council? Because I don't work for a single individual council member, I work for the council. And again, I work for the council as a body or through the city manager, both of which I think, it also helps, I think, you as a body determine what you as a body want, not just what's one or maybe two council members want. So...
We have a lot of discussion with no motion.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Point of order. We had a point of order, and we're asking for, for us to continue, there should be a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the attorney take a look at the, see if we can get out of that contract. The contract with the ex-manager who has lifetime insurance that he incurred after only six years of being a manager here.
Is there a second to the motion? Second to the motion? Being done, the motion dies. Okay. All right. I'm sorry that you had to be waiting so long for this, but that's okay, we had to take care of this issue for us right now, so. Any other questions? Reference the audit. Being done, thank you very much, a good presentation. And each of us does have the full audit, this is the full audit, every bit is in there for us, so thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the management update, I would ask Colleen Sproll, who's the chairperson of the Human Planning Commission, and she is presenting the commission's recommendations for block grant ESG and home programs.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council, city manager and city clerk. My name is Colleen Sproll. I'm here this evening to present our recommendations to the city council for the CDBG funding period of 2015 through 2016. Just as a way of introduction, the Human Planning Commission's role is to provide constructive and effective input into an advisory capacity to the city council. Commissioners serve the city of Saginaw by working to assist the city council in solving community social and physical problems. The commission's goal is to ensure that community residents have an opportunity for self-development and to provide an opportunity for those who live in respective neighborhoods to identify challenges, issues, and priorities within their neighborhoods. The commission seeks to understand and identify resolution for those concerns. Annually, the Human Planning Commission holds block grant hearings and makes recommendations for funding considerations to the city council. The total CDBG funds available for 2015, 2016 were $2,446,000, I'm sorry, $2,446,993. Requests for these funds totaled $4,028,767, which included requests for ongoing projects and an additional $490,118 in new activities. The top priorities for grant allocation were crime, supporting neighborhood communities, and helping youth. The commission recognized the importance of recommending funding for basic city needs to maintain the infrastructure of the city of Saginaw. Commissioners chose to continue to support local programs that leverage every dollar awarded to secure matching funds. On housing and rehabilitation, the total amount requested from the entitlement funds for 2015 through 2016 was $1,447,394. The commission made an effort to keep this year's recommendations consistent with the 2013, 2014 appropriations. Funding for specification writing was recommended at $115,000, and residential loans and grants at $368,623. Funding for the elderly and disabled rehab was made at $133,180, because the commission recognizes the need to assist those who are living in their own homes. Additionally, the commissioners allocated $170,248 to the basic needs program. This amount reflects a $64,948 increase over 2014, 2015, and recognizes the ongoing efforts of the city to assist the most vulnerable in our community, the elderly and disabled. Commissioners receive frequent feedback from residents about the need to improve the conditions of the streets of the city of Saginaw. There is recognition that funds for roads are inadequate, and funds are so inadequate that it would be impossible to repair the 296 miles of streets within the city of Saginaw. Commissioners value the ongoing efforts of the city to maximize existing funds through matching funds and pursuing the strategy of seeking additional funding when possible to support the infrastructure of the city. The commission recommends that the streets resurfacing reconstruction be funded at This is a slight increase over 2014-15 appropriation of $186,615. Additionally, the commission is recommending that a new applicant, Hearts for the Community, receive an allocation of $14,550 for the construction of a pavilion, including a recreational court and basketball rims. This allocation is intended to provide additional support for the current programming efforts of Life and Christ Ministries to provide residence of South Side Bloomfield Townhouse area and outdoor recreational facility for youth and their families. Similarly, the commissioners are recommending $14,000 to Interlink. The commission is also recommending the allocation of $10,000 to Restoration Community Outreach for the renovation of a restroom that is located in the emergency shelter The recommendation for demolition of dangerous buildings is $236,414. This is the same amount that was awarded last year. Saginaw Economic Development Corporation awards minimum amounts for corporate business loans. The recommendation for 2015, 2016 is $102,612. Commissioners are recommending $375,000 for loan repayments as well. The commission further recommends funding the Saginaw Downtown Development Association at its current level of $64,598. For public service, this allocation category has an estimated cap of 15% or $365,64, and requests for continuing and new total $803,186. The commission recommended funding for organizations that provide programs for youth services, public safety, and neighborhood development. The Human Planning Commission recommends that youth protective services and teen parent and support are funded in the amount of $18,268 each. This agency consistently leverages annual block grant funding to gain matching dollars. Commissioners are impressed with this agency's track record for obtaining nationally-recognized accreditation for their programming and for their financial transparency when submitting requests to the commission. The Human Planning Commission is recommending $198,250 for community pleasing, crime prevention in 2015 and 2016. This amount reflects an increase of $11,635 over last year. Support for this program reflects the commissioners' priority for safe neighborhoods within the communities that they represent. Three new requests for 2015 and 2016, First Ward Community Centers HIRE, which is Helping Individuals Retain Employment, Saginaw County CAC Literacy Program, and Legal Services of Eastern Michigan Fair Housing Testing were recommended to receive $20,000, $27,851, and $9,013, respectively. Commissioners recommend that First Ward Lacer received $27,971 for the continued provision of after-school and summer programs that enhance and expand the afternoon learning for youth K through 12. Horton Jones Neighborhood Task Force was recommended to receive $31,887 again this year in recognition of their efforts to support families and youth within our community. The Human Planning Commission recommends $13,556 in funding for home maintenance self-help for Saginaw Habitat for Humanity. Excuse me. On administration, the recommendation is to fund the block grant administration at $426,357, which is $28,606 less than the 2014-15 allocation. Under the emergency shelter grants, the cap is $173,183. Services to alleviate homelessness continue to be a community priority. The commission recommends funding Interlink at $31,112, Underground Railroad at $42,450, and Restoration Community Outreach at $54,400. All agencies provide very important services to different segments of the population. Continued funding of $17,963 is recommended for the ongoing support of the HMIS project out of the United Way of Saginaw. This project tracks the homeless emergency shelter agencies in compliance with HUD regulations, as well as $27,168 for homeless prevention and rapid housing efforts. Home funds, this year's limit for home funds is $345,628. The commission recommends the city of Saginaw residential grant for $278,783. Funding the community housing development organization's operating expenses are recommended at $15,000, as well as the Saginaw Habits for Humanity Habitat house funding in the amount of $51,845. In conclusion, the Human Planning Commission respectfully submits our recommended priorities for activities to meet community needs for the 2015-2016 grant years. And as we've chatted about this evening, the Human Planning Commission is a group of diverse citizens from the city of Saginaw who meet to recommend the best use of the community development block grant funds, the emergency shelter grant funds, and the home funds, including community housing development organization funds. The commissioners appreciate the opportunity to serve our community and would like to thank the councilpersons that attended our sessions. We would also like to thank the city manager, the director of development, and block grant staff for their help and support, which we really rely on to make our decisions. Thank you very much.
We'll start with Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Thank you very much. You mentioned the CAC getting some funds here that you recommend, and, yeah, we have a memorandum regarding that, it was mentioned by someone tonight about them owing approximately $92,000 to the city. Since 2006, these funds have been due. Was that taken into account, or is that part of, go ahead?
When we deliberated during the week, the final week, midweek, right up before Christmas, it's my understanding that we had not been apprised of, the city had not been apprised of that, or was just beginning to learn of this decision. To answer your question, the commissioners were not aware, because it had not been revealed yet to the city.
If you look at your document, there is... The Human Planning Commission recommended and city manager's proposed budget, so that change is reflected... So that change is reflected in the city manager's proposed budget to council. So there are a few differences and that's one of them. Another one that is on there that Human Planning Commission did not recommend funding for parishioners on patrol and the city manager's proposed budget recommends funding for parishioners on patrol. So that's another change. And then the Human Planning Commission did not recommend funding for major courts for minors and the city manager's proposed budget is major courts for minors. Now, those changes, the other changes, an increase in the Saginaw, City of Saginaw-Saginaw County Basic Needs Program. So the changes there are a result of the CAC comment that we received. I had a meeting with Ms. Sproul and major courts for minors was one that they had, that the Planning Commission had very high on their list to fund. They just ran out of money. So in my recommendation, I added that. I added parishioners on patrol because in my view, we had issues last year. I would expect groups to make significant changes or contributions to affect the programs that the citizens have said they wanted. In my view, parishioners on patrol made a lot of changes after last year's funding and the representative mentioned that they changed their location. And personally, I knew of some things that parishioners on patrol is working on that I think significantly impacts the neighborhoods in which they work even beyond the block grant dollars. That's why I added parishioners on patrol in my recommendation. So those are the changes and it's not that I didn't agree with what the Planning Commission had put. It just so happens that they do all of their work prior to the audit being done. And I know you all have a copy of the audit that issue with that, with the block grant is in the other comments, internal control over grant compliance. It's a council member Balls asked about. So as Dave from Yo and Yo mentioned, they look at how you address these other manners and if you don't address them, then that's when you have issues that come up as material weaknesses or issues with internal controls. So my job is, or one of my jobs, is to advise council as the best way that I can. So I look at the audit comment where it says, other comments where the auditor writes, "We recommend the city end relationships with sub recipients that are not in full compliance with past or present grant contracts." That's the basis of my change. The issue was not one that I was aware of because it occurred even prior to when I had worked for the city at all. The staff that was aware of it is, for the most part, gone from development as well. Ms. Franklin didn't work with that at the time that this occurred. The development director that was here then is gone now. That was from 2004 or '06. So there wasn't a staff here that was aware of it. I, in my view, I need to recommend to you that you protect the city. I have full confidence that we'll work with the group to make sure that we can rectify the situation. For me to feel comfortable recommending funding to council, I need something from HUD saying it's okay because I don't want to recommend something that puts any other funding at risk. So that's the basis for that.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, this is. Go ahead.
Then if we're going to do that, I remember Nash is asking the questions about community policing and I see where you may be. I'm going back again to what was told to us about these funds were not supposed to be allocated totally and solely. If we look at the budget, I know our officers do what they're supposed to do and where they're supposed to be, but they're already getting 60% of the budget. So now when you look at this and the recommendation, it was to increase. Last year I asked it and I'm going to ask it again. Can we get somebody in here from HUD to tell us whether or not we can do it? I'm not saying don't do it, but I'm saying it was a concern last year and we talked about it and it never happened.
I can tell you that it has happened. It was a concern that was brought up by council. I researched it. I met with our block grant staff and others that had worked with that in the past. HUD has not told us that we can't fund it in this manner. In fact, community policing is one of the programs that HUD likes the most, particularly with the way that it has been changed, the quadrant system and the service delivery is something that they view as positive. We haven't received ever anything in writing that says, "Don't fund community policing in this way." It's been funded the way that it has over the past several years and HUD has approved our annual plans each year without any written comment about community policing. In my recommendations, I keep community policing at the same level that the Human Planning Commission put it at. I didn't change that due to the fact that I did the research and talked to the staff and that's what I received. Last year, I did mention we need to, let's look at other options. At this point, for that particular program, there is basically one other federal funding opportunity and it's the Federal COPS Grant. I don't believe that they had an offering last year. We would not have been eligible to apply for it if it had been there because we have a sanction because we reduced our police force after we received COPS. So we have to surpass, I believe that was a one-time, a one-year ban on our applying for COPS grant. So we looked into that and that wasn't an opportunity either. So that's what we talked about. What are some other opportunities? And had we been notified? We hadn't. Again, we don't, we're not looking at each program and I think if we were going to do that to community policing, I think you'd have to have HUD come in and say, "Is this program okay with you? Is this program okay?" They're approving our annual plan and that's the bottom line. If they had a problem with it, I would assume they would not approve our annual plan.
Part two, go ahead.
So I just need clarification on this Saginaw County Community Action Elderly. The CHOR money that's normally allocated, this year the CHOR money was supposed to go to the CAC. So are you saying that you want to look into this and look at trying to dial what's going on with the company? The CHOR money? The CHOR money was supposed to go, last year it went to Habitat. This year, the CHOR money was supposed to go to CAC.
Thank you. Councilman Moore, they did not apply for it this year. So there wasn't anything to allocate. They didn't apply for it.
I just think they had to. Last year it was, it was said last year was Habitat's money and this year it would be CAC's money.
Typically, we do that typically, but neither. I mean, they did not, they, it didn't work out like that this year. They still have to ask for it and they didn't do that. Instead, I think they asked for money to support the literacy program as well as to continue the home funding. So they sort of, and they also wanted to do a childcare, which again, we don't, we don't fund childcare programs, but they switched their funding focus. So they did not request it this year.
Councilman Ball.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at the City of Saginaw-Saginaw County Basic Need Grant. The Human Planning Commission recommended $170,000 and you give them $303,000. What is the basic needs?
The Basic Needs Program is a citywide housing program where we go in and do basic repairs for homeowners that have lived in the house for a year. Taxes and insurance have to be paid. The reason why the number is so high is because we absorb the CAC's allocation. If we're able to get CAC back eligible before July 1st, we can give those dollars back to them.
Okay. That's what I was hoping to hear. Thank you. And how about with the women of color? Why we didn't give them any money? They got an issue with compliances or what?
It's not a compliance. It was the feeling of the Commissioners this year. As we looked to all of the applicants, we wanted to see evidence or have them share with us their ability to secure other funding and to present that information. For the majority of the funding that we did this year, especially for returning, we knew that we were on limited funds this year. So one of the ways that we wanted to support the groups that we were supporting were ones that were actively securing funds and getting matching funds for that, for their programs. And when they presented and in their materials, their application, the grant material, that if they were doing that, it was not represented. So that's what we worked on and that's what we reflected on.
It seemed to me like they got more human power than they got money issues. I mean, all those people that's working in their program, I'm thinking about all the people that they impacting, you know, individually. I mean, that's money that the police department is not going to have to spend because those people are spending time with some great people in the community, you know? And for the amount of money that they asking for, $10,000 for all the work that they do, I don't think it's too much for us not to fund that program. So I wouldn't vote for this budget without giving them that small grant that they asking for. That's just how I feel. I mean, I don't know how the rest of the city council feels or city manager, but I mean, if they didn't have any problem with complacency, I can understand. I mean, all those people here.
They, just a point of clarification, they requested $50,000 this year.
But last year we gave them what?
$9,570.
I'm sure they'd be more than happy to take that same $9,000 again. I mean, a lot of them request way more than they really actually want, but they, you know, they end up taking the smaller amount. So for the work that we get out of them, I mean, that's, I can't imagine how many kids are not on the street doing crime and costing our police department a lot of money because those people are spending quality time with them. Could we take some money out of that basic need grant and give them if we see fit?
No.
Well, how could they give the basic needs is what CAC is?
It's in the same category, yes.
So we don't need kids to be off the street?
Well, you know, I would, I would, on the funding, I defer to the Human Planning Commission. The changes that I made were as a result of that one issue. And then I looked at the remaining groups, talked to them and see what they had priority and then I prioritized the group that I thought, you know, but as I look at this and I have no doubt that there is a great impact from that group. And I would have no doubt there's a, be a great impact from First Ward Summer Basketball, Hearts for Community Day Camp, Hearts for Community Beautification. There's a number of groups here that do a lot of work that maybe didn't happen to have several people come in lined up to talk tonight that it's difficult for me to just use that as a basis when the Human Planning Commission is there to do these interviews and hear a lot more, hear from all the groups, hear from the groups, prioritize, go back in the community, talk to the residents and see what they prioritize. That's, to me, that's one of the reasons why we have a Commissioner from each voting district so that you can go back and talk and see what, you know, what do your residents, what are residents in your district valuing, what groups do they like? I assume that's what the Commissioners do. That's the purpose of the system. That's why I defer to them on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
But sometimes you don't go along with their recommendations. By looking at this sheet of paper right here, you don't go along with everything they say. Am I right?
This year I did not and that's a result of this comment in the audit. Otherwise, I likely would not have any changes. I think if you go and look back at the history, even with the previous city manager, I think the manager's recommendation is almost always the same as the Human Planning Commission.
But it's not the same. That's all, it's not the same. And I mean, you heard information from minors with cords and it made you want to give that organization some money.
Well, I got the information from the Human Planning Commission on that item. The one that I changed that was not really in their funding level was parishioners on patrol's patrol because I know of the changes that they made and also I think the mayor, Mayor Protem, worked with them and I believe Councilman Fitzpatrick too on making, okay, no. I guess as Mayor, Mayor Protem on making the changes that were required. If you recall, last year parishioners on patrol didn't meet everything either, weren't initially funded. So they came to the city and said, "Hey, you know, for next year, what can we do that could be changed? What would you want to see from us that would help us get funding?" And they made those changes that we talked about. That's the reason why I put that in there. I saw an effort on their part to make the changes.
My sentiment been heard. I just hope that maybe someone could see in their heart to give a good organization helping a lot of kids out, you know, some funds to do it. So that's how I feel.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Very informative and we do appreciate all the work of the committee.
You're welcome.
Mr. Manager, based on the information provided relative to the CAC issue, just for clarification, you know, the funds originally allocated have been absorbed in the basic needs category. And the intent is to sit down and try to work through this situation with CAC to resolve it prior to July 2015.
Right.
Is that right?
That's right.
If that occurs, then the intent, secondly, is to refund the organization?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe that Ms. Jones and Ms. Franklin will be, if not have already started to work with CAC, they will be working with them fairly, on a fairly immediate basis. If we can get something in place that's, you know, has the acceptable audit trail and works towards a resolution, I think that we could move back there even if we don't get notification back. Sometimes HUD takes a year or more, but if we can have things in place that I think would satisfy that, then we can probably make that change.
Okay. That sounds amiable to me. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Tibbs, did you have a question?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I like coming in your work going through $4 million worth of requests. I mean, that's quite challenging and demanding. I guess I was looking under economic development and I guess I was looking under loan repayments, $375,000. I was, I guess I was wondering what loans are being repaid?
Your question.
The $375,000 in loan repayments. What loans are being repaid?
All the loans that SBC makes, so like we have bakeries, funeral homes, restaurants. I can provide you a list of all the loans that we've done and all the loans that are still in repayment and we have permission from HUD to use those repayments as revolving loan fund. So as the payments come back in, those are the dollars that we use to make new loans.
If I could, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Different subject.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I was going to ask about the, about this CAC and, you know, as the Mayor Protem, glad the city is working with them to try to get this matter resolved. But I guess we're looking into whether or not this is a paperwork issue or not. I mean, it seems like it's cutting against them rather than, they're not getting the benefit of the doubt and I guess I was just a little concerned about that. It seemed like they're taking the responsibility for something that possibly the city may have done after 10 years.
I was, I was going to ask about the, uh, about this, uh, CAC and, you know, as the Mayor Pro Tem, glad the city is working with them to try to get this matter resolved. Um, but I, I guess we're looking into whether or not this is a, a paperwork issue or not. I mean, it seems like it's cutting against them rather than, we're, they're not getting the benefit of the doubt. And I guess I was just a little, um, concerned about that. It seemed like they're taking the responsibility for something that possibly the city may have done after ten years of paper shuffling.
I don't, I don't believe it's something that the city may or may not have done. The issue was with the grant funds themselves and the way they were utilized by the organization. So at that point in time, both groups should have gone together and worked it out. It didn't happen at that time, so it needs to happen now. You more than likely should not, when you have that issue, approve funding for an organization that you have that issue up, whose ever fault it is. Um, but like the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem was asking, um, you have that opportunity, so we have, you know, a few months to try to collect it or get, or correct it or get on the path for correction where it can be resolved. And, um, we can do that before the funding's in place. It's going to benefit both areas because as, as the representative from CAC mentioned, it's on their audit too. Similar to the issue we had with, I, there's some council members that probably remember the issue we had with Saginaw Housing Commission and the, the outstanding charges we had there. It's something you have to work through and you have to put it in place and then move forward who, regardless of whose, whose fault it is. So I, I think we can do that. And I see the staff nodding, so I think they can work through it.
And just my last question, as far as the women, women of color and their request, um, you know, it's pretty impressive when you have, um, individuals coming back to serve their community to an extent. Um, you know, I attended several of their functions as well and they're, it's kind of tough that they don't have their, their ducks in a row per se. But, uh, I, I guess I was asking, is it common to go from some funding to, to no funding at all? I mean, isn't it more common to have some type of possibly a decrease in funding rather than just go from something to nothing?
At times, yes. That would be, that would be an approach, yes.
If you look through though, there were other organizations.
Habitat for Humanity is one that received funding last year, requested and did not get recommended.
And so did East, uh, Eastern Michigan Legal, I think Legal Services as well. They don't have my budget, let me.
So it does, it does happen.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Well, again, I want to commend you and the Human Planning Commission. This is a tireless effort that you do. Each council member had received, have received a copy of each one of those requests. They also received a copy of when the meetings were. And I know some, uh, uh, council members attended, others, uh, for whatever other reason, time-wise, working, whatever, could, could not make those. But, uh, I, I just want to thank you very much to you and all the members in the audience for, uh, an outstanding job that you do every year. So, uh, thank you very much. Mr. Manager.
The final, um, item on the management update is, um, Ms. Church has her, um, Equal Employment Opportunity Report that we had bumped from our planning session to tonight.
Okay. Finally. And thank you very much for letting us go early on Saturday. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. I benefited as well.
Which now we are wondering, we're questioning now whether that was a good decision since it's going on nine thirty already, but that's okay. We like that. So go ahead, Beth.
Well, and also the fact that I have two presentations tonight instead of just the one, but I will be brief.
Thank you.
The first one I'll start with is the fiscal year 2015 mid-year personnel complement changes. I believe you have, uh, a copy of that in your packet.
Okay. Let's see if I can find that one real quick.
It's the one where I show the additions and deletions to staff and any title changes that we've made.
We did get those. Oh, constant communication, that would trade. Wow. That's a whole different file.
Not a lot of changes at this time. Basically, most of them have to do with our Maintenance and Service Division. Some of you may recall that back in September of last year, um, the Maintenance and Service Administrator position became vacant due to the death of John Primo. When vacancies occur, we always take a step back on the management review team and we take a look at before filling those positions, are there things we could do differently to increase efficiencies? You'll notice in the bottom half of the first page, we deleted the Management and Service, Maintenance and Service Administrator position, and we replaced it with the addition to staff, the Assistant Superintendent of Maintenance and Service. That was for a savings of five thousand dollars. But in tandem with that, we decided to have the Maintenance and Service Division now report to the Superintendent of Water Treatment that you'll see on the top of the second page. We felt water and the distribution of water did go hand in hand together. And so what we recommended is that the Superintendent of Water Treatment now be called the Superintendent of Water Treatment and Field Operations and that that pay grade be increased from the M-77 to an M-82 because now the superintendent is over both water and maintenance and service water distribution. So to assist that superintendent, we created the Assistant Superintendent that you see on the first page. Wastewater Superintendent has an assistant. The Water Superintendent previously had an assistant. So we added one to Maintenance and Service to help with the day-to-day operational efficiencies within the area. So those were changes that we made that affected the Maintenance and Service Division as well as the water treatment, uh, facility. The other change on page two is a, um, pay grade change for our Chief Inspector, which is John Stempel. If you'll recall, he as the Chief Inspector had been over one area of our Department of Development. Over the years, we have eliminated the Assistant Director of Development and we have eliminated the Director of Development. So now the inspections area with block grant being moved over to the finance area was a standalone unit that now reports directly to the city manager. So there's been an increase in responsibilities there. Uh, he's taken over the, uh, planning and zoning function and is much more active with the neighborhood associations. So there was a pay grade adjustment in that position. And the last change we made was in the hourly rate that's paid to our part-time parking enforcement, um, position. We had two part-time parking enforcement officers and we just had a Dickens of a time keeping that second part-time position filled. At a pay rate of eight fifty an hour, over the course of two years, we made seven job offers and were not able to retain anyone in that position. They work some pretty terrible hours, getting up at, uh, five o'clock in the morning to, uh, issue tickets for illegal street parking. Uh, we weren't able to retain anyone. For as long as that position was vacant, we had no revenues coming into the city. So we had to do something to make the position more attractive and keep someone in the position. So the pay grade was increased from eight fifty an hour to eleven dollars an hour. Even though that looks like an expense, we have additional revenues coming in and that benefits the city. So if you look at the recap on the bottom of page two, the changes that we're recommending have a wage impact of thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. But what's happening is that expense is being offset primarily due to those increased parking revenues.
Any comments, questions about this?
You talking about the parking, you talking about the parking revenues that we may get? We haven't got them yet, right?
We are starting to. Uh, we had one person start, uh, two weeks, three weeks ago, and the second one is being trained right now. So we do have people in place and, uh, as soon as they're done training and able to work on their own, they will be generating revenue.
Yes, sir. That's it.
Anyone else on this section here? Okay. Thanks, Beth.
All right. One down, one to go.
One down. Let's go to the next.
The next one is the semi-annual EEO report that, uh, you also have had distributed to you. And on the bottom of the second page, I wish to point out that as of December 31st of 2014, if you take a look at all three hundred and ninety-nine of the city's employees, which is outlined in yellow on the bottom of the second page, um, we've been asked to take a look at our minority representation. And I want to point out that we have currently twenty-nine point oh-seven percent minority representation. If you reference that to the very bottom line, um, the box highlighted in yellow is as of a year ago, December 31st, 2013. You'll see we've increased our representation just over one point five percent. That might not sound like a big improvement, but it takes a lot to, to turn the ship. Uh, we're making definite strides in that area. I went back and I looked at what our hiring statistics were over the last six months, from July 1st of 2014 to December 31st. We hired fifteen employees, forty percent were minorities. Then I took a look at our hiring for all of 2014, from January 1st through December 31st. We hired fifty employees, again, forty percent minorities. These are not rehires. This is not bringing back the kids that worked at Celebration Park or the seasonal groundskeepers that come back every year. These are brand-new employees being hired for the first time to the city. So you can see that it took, um, those forty percent hirings to just make that one point five percent increase. So we're getting there. I wanted to, um, explain a little bit of the difference between the pools that we use when we're doing this report. We use those employees that are on the payroll as of June 30th and December 31st of every year. And people come and go in with the city. When you look at the December figures, you have crossing guards included in this figure. But they're gone when we do the June report. What comes in, in June are the Celebration Park workers, the seasonal groundskeepers, the temporary laborers that are mowing grass at water and wastewater. So our population and the positions they fill ebb and flow. The city manager referenced some of our activity that we had at our Career Fair last Thursday. And I wanted to just, uh, give you a little bit more of a recap on that. He mentioned that we did have one hundred and three applications. That was not counting any of the applications of people who are interested in police officer. They were not able to turn in their applications on the day of the Career Fair because they had a couple extra steps to do. They had to go online with the Michigan Commission on law enforcement standards, get registered to take their reading and writing test, sign up to take their physical agility test. And then they were instructed to package all of that documentation together and submit it at one time before the end of April so that pieces didn't get lost. You've got a resume over here, you've got a physical fitness test resolved over here. So those have not come back in. But we did accept applications from thirty-nine firefighters, seven certified or certifiable police officers, uh, seven people signed up to be reserve officers. We had twenty-two, uh, applications for parking. We had twenty applications for environmental compliance ordinances and eight seasonal groundskeepers. So, um, we have been making an effort to hire locally for police and fire. And I was very happy to report that of those thirty-nine firefighter applications, we received forty-three point six percent were from minority candidates. So we are attempting to do what we wanted to do and that was to get female and minority The last thing that's in your packet that I just want to reference is what we have been using currently for our police and fire recruitment sources. Uh, you were given somewhat of a, a list of this, uh, I think when Dennis Jordan made a presentation a couple of meetings ago. Um, I've added a few more things that we've done that are new to the, our recruitment strategy and I've packaged it a little bit differently. You can now see what social media we're using, what minority publications we're using, uh, a list of the websites and our direct mailings. So I want to thank everyone who got the word out, uh, at our Career Fair. I think it was a great success. Uh, the, the room was packed and rather overheated from all the, the people here that came to talk and I think we made some great contacts.
Questions?
City council members? Questions, comments?
It's good to see that these, uh, that you are reaching out in the community. And I hope that maybe the numbers will look, you know, a lot better than it is, you know, right now, but at least we're going that way. So that's, that's a good thing.
Yes. Thank you.
You know, the proof will be in the pudding next year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Considering some of their input and going forth with that, I, you know, for, for me, that fair was just, wasn't about finding applicants, but actually just the city being more welcoming to residents. I mean, I just think there, there's, whether it was fiction or real, it almost felt like a barrier, which kind of understanding considering the cutbacks you had for so long. I mean, maybe we're getting close to being right-sized and now we're able to open up to the residents more. And I just appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it was good to be able to come forward and say, here are some employment opportunities. And thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Senator Grab, I know you've been at this a long time and I, and I can sense your excitement in terms of what's going on and, and the trajectory that we're going. And, uh, I, I, I feel the same. I think the, the steps that we've taken in a short period of time, uh, have been monumental in terms of having the welcome mat out, say, hey, come on in, we want you to consider some opportunities in the city of Saginaw. So, uh, I'm very pleased to, to see and hear, uh, the talk and the buzz, you know, from some of the things we've tried and are trying, uh, to create an opportunity for more minorities and all across the board in, in the city of Saginaw. So, uh, that's good. So let's keep that trajectory on an up, in an incline, upward spiral.
Will do.
Okay. And, uh, I think we'll be okay. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Mr. Manager?
That concludes the management update.
Okay. Clerk?
Yes. Mayor, your next order of business is the consent agenda.
And the consent agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city website and on SGTV channel one ninety-one. Need a motion to adopt the consent agenda items leaving room for exceptions?
Moved.
Has been moved and supported. Are there any objections?
Two.
Compliment, Floris, item two. Is there any other objection? Compliment Fitzpatrick. Number nine. Is there any other objection? Any other objection? Be and none? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Item number two is approve the insurance proposals with Chubb Federal Insurance Company for combined building and personal property, business income and extra expense, valuable papers and records, computer coverage, flood, earthquake and animals in the petting zoo, with the Hanover Insurance Group for crime coverage, with Chubb Federal Insurance Company for equipment floater and bridges coverage, with Cincinnati Insurance Company for machinery and equipment breakdown coverage, and Hudson Insurance Company for storage tank liability insurance effective February 1st, 2015 to February 1st, 2016, for a total cost of three hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars. That was Councilman Floris.
Compliment, Floris.
Thank you. Um, I'm looking at the deductibles on some of these, specifically floating docks. What's the downside of having a problem with a, with a floating dock that costs us twenty-five thousand deductible? What is the upside or downside of self, self ensuring that, that particular item? We have a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible for a floating dock. That sounds rather high to me. Of course, I've never bought a floating dock.
What cost does that?
How many, how many docks do we have and what's the downside of, of losing one?
Uh, if, city clerk?
That sounds rather high to me, of course, I've never bought a floating dock. How many, how many docks do we have, and what's the downside of, of losing one?
Uh, City Clerk, go ahead.
With the exception of floating docks.
With the exception of the floating docks.
It does?
Deductible for this policy, yeah, with the exception of floating docks. Whiz does carry the $25,000. Yes, that's correct.
I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed.
You're right, it does carry $25,000.
Yeah, you are right, I'm sorry.
Deductible on the floating dock.
Oh, it does.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Julie, do you want to address?
Yes, go ahead.
What is the value of the dock? That's the real issue.
That's, that's my point.
Yeah, we're talking about the floating docks that were put in as far, as part of that riverfront development project back in '05 or '06. That was over a million-dollar project total, but the value of them docks back then, I believe, was $300,000 to $400,000 of that. I mean, it's the floating docks that are along the west side of the, the river in front of, up near 400 Hamilton, and then also the docks that are off of Ojibwe Island that we take in and out seasonally.
How many docks?
Well, there's many sections, but the total feet, if you were to put it to length, I believe there's probably at least 300 to 400 feet on the west side, and then if you add them all up on the, on the one that's along Ojibwe Island, that's at least another 100 feet or more of docks. It's the docks, and then the little fingers on them so the boats can park and, you know, get on and off and come onto the island, and then also on the west side of the, the river. So, the replacement value of them today would probably, I don't have that information in front of me, but probably be well over $400,000.
Thanks, Phil.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else on that?
Aye. No, not at this point. I, I'll move adoption.
We have a, a motion to approve and support it. Any further discussion? Constable Cloris.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Actually, my, don't go away, Phil. My, my concern is, was actually the debris removal deductible, which is four times what it is for the docks. Can you explain what debris removal we're talking about, and why we would have a deductible saw on that one? Can anybody explain?
A little bit on that. I don't have the information in front of me because I was kind of called here on it. Someone was called, the person that was supposed to be here was called away on an emergency, but I can get back to you on that. But mainly what debris removal is, is it's on the building. So if half of your building is destroyed by fire and by city ordinance or some ordinance, you can't rebuild because too much of it has been destroyed. The rest of it has to be taken down too, so there's demolition costs, and then there's the cost to remove the debris. All that's included in the property deductible, so debris removal is like an extra coverage that's included in there.
If we have a fire, normally fire insurance covers all of that.
It will, but at a certain point, you can't rebuild because too much has been destroyed, or if a tornado comes through, and if 80% of the building has been destroyed, you're, a lot of times, you either don't want to rebuild or you can't rebuild. So there's debris that has to be torn away before you can rebuild.
Well, I guess, I'm, I'm still confused. Normally, a fire, you have a fire, you have fire insurance. Fire insurance covers removal because you got to remove to rebuild or to even, or buy, build a new one, whatever you got to do. Same goes for a tornado. You normally have debris removal included in the policy. Now, if you're saying that those policies don't include debris removal for a fire, for, for a tornado, for catastrophic loss, then that makes some, some sense.
Yeah.
But that's normally included. So, and my guess, my question expands then, do the other policies not include, or they exclude debris removal?
Debris removal is always an extra coverage, because when you buy replacement cost on a building, the policy's going to cost, pay for you to replace the building the way it was. Debris removal is an extra expense to them, so they throw that in as an extra coverage. So it's not automatically included, but it's normally a part of the policy, but has a sublimit.
Do we have those in those policies?
Yes.
All right.
I don't know what the limit is right now, but I can.
Well, I mean, if it's in the policies, I just don't know why we would have a separate debris removal coverage at all. It just doesn't make sense to me, let alone worry about a deductible.
That is, that is, the debris removal that we're showing on there is the coverage that's included in the, in the policy.
So you're saying that this, but that's only referring to a equipment floater policy? It doesn't cover all the other coverages? You've got blanket coverage for buildings and personal property. I'm assuming we have fire policy someplace else. This is simply the equipment floater policy with a $100 deductible for debris removal?
I'd have to look at it because I'm.
I mean, I understand, you weren't expecting to be part of this.
I'm confused. I can get the information back to Janet.
What is our timeline in having to decide this? I think maybe is the next question.
To the city manager or staff, what is the, this is not one of those last minute, we got to do it tonight, is it?
Well, it was effective February 1st, which was yesterday. So what we can do is review this, and I'm, I'm sure it's explainable, we're just, we just don't have it at our hands right now.
So.
So we can get you a reply and an answer on that.
We don't want to approve this if, if what we don't like is the answer coming up in a short time.
You can always delete it anytime. Change it anytime.
Can be added anytime.
Add it anytime, yes.
This is one of the reasons why we get the packets out on Thursday, and if you have questions like this, reported to me earlier today, I could have contacted probably, Peter's probably the one who was going to be here, but so.
He was called away on an emergency.
I know you normally do.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Manager, and I normally would have done so, but I was unable to do so with this package. So I apologize.
But then I would recommend, if you, if you don't want it in there, I believe it's referring to the pollutant cleanup probably and the equipment refill, but if you want to remove it, we could just remove it now and add it to the next meeting or.
I would so move, the week before, we would, we removed the issue of debris coverage.
I have a mo, I had a previous motion to, to accept this, and it's been a seconded. Do we need then amend, to amend the motion? Is that correct?
Would you like to know first, though, how much it would cost, save you to, to delete that?
Yeah, I mean, and, and.
Oh, sure.
Coming from my federal knowledge, with all due respect to the management recommendation, I guess my recommendation would be to pass it as it is, and then within the next meeting, you could change that, and I think it would be a diminutive amount if you wanted to change it. Is that true, Julie?
Yes, and they would.
That would be easier.
They would retrodate it back to February 1st if you did want to delete it, but if you're going to delete the coverage and it's only going to save you a small amount, sometimes you need both that information to make that decision.
And I, I will not make the motion to amend, but I will ask the manager to have this entire issue explained to us in full so that we can understand whether or not the other policy should cover it, whether or not the cost of the coverage is even worth $100,000 deductible, all of those issues.
So then the motion stands then to approve this, and with the understanding that our city manager is going to come, get back with us on the requested information on this particular item. Is that correct?
Yes, Ms. Mayor.
And if need be, then we can revisit and change the, the, okay? Is there any other discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, the next exception was item number nine, as to approve the purchase orders to Tri-County International Trucks at the state bid price of $274,365 for the purchase of three 2015 International Cab and Chassis and to Truck and Trailer Specialties Incorporated at the state bid price of $322,038.48 for plowing, salting, and dump body equipment installed for the Streets, Sections, Right-Away Division, and further approve a fiscal year 2015 budget adjustment recognizing these funds.
Constable Fitzpatrick.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, Phil, um, okay, so how is this split up? We've got two different vendors here, and yet we got three trucks.
Yeah, what happens with this is Tri-County International is the state bid for the chassis, the truck and chassis itself, the engine components, and then Truck and Trailer Specialty is the state bidder for the upfitting of it. They're the ones that put the salter boxes, the dump body on it. So it's, the Tri-County doesn't outfit it, so it's kind of a two-part. Tri-County's getting the PO for the actual trucks themselves, minus the accessories, and then Truck and Trailer is the state bid for the dump body, the salter box, the underbody plow, the front plow.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So that's the two-part to it with the three trucks.
I see. And when would you, it, it, you know, if we pass this, and I don't know why we wouldn't, but when would you have those trucks, and how would you have them outfitted? Would they be good for us this year?
Yeah, I mean, if this gets passed, we're hoping to have the trucks, because, you know, we did talk about this. This was all part of a presentation, April 2014, where we talked about this, and that way we could get, the thing with the trucks is, is it's a one-year, it's like a one-year, they're just not sitting on a shelf waiting to be made, so, you know, the people have been putting these things together, and the trucks would be ready probably the middle to end of this month with this approved tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's, it's a, it's a 10 to 12-month process to manufacture these trucks.
Mm-hmm, right. Okay, so then the funding for this, I, I know we discussed, this has been discussed before, you know, April 21st, you know, 2014. So is there, can somebody give me a quick update as to how we're funding this?
Yeah, the, the funding, as we mentioned a while back, is similar to the, the, the fire apparatus, the two foreman trucks that we already bought in the front-end loader. The problem with our trucks is, these trucks are so expensive, as you can see, they're $180,000 to $200,000 each, and when I'm trying to maintain a fleet of 12, to just go out and say, buy half of them every three or four years, we can't afford, you know, I mean, you're looking at 12 trucks times 200,000, $2.4 million. We can't afford that, just a one-time investment. So what we're trying to do is stagger these, and we're doing them under a finance package. I mean, that's kind of what the budget adjustment, I think, is accounting for. Within the current budget we're in, I, I actually budgeted for an annual payment, and I think there's actually a sheet in there that shows your, it's a 10-year loan, so there's going to be 20 payments because we're going to make them semi-annually or biannually. So, we have already budgeted, in the current budget, our annual payment, and then moving forward, we will budget that. And it's coming out of the gas and weight dollars, our act $51, and also, and what we did is we put it together based on the usage. I think it's 80 or 85% major streets and 10 to 15% out of our rubbish fund, because two of these trucks, it's going to be need as well. We're, we're up, we're upfitting them with what's called like a swap loader unit. All the trucks we have now are pretty much single or two uses only, and we use them to plow all year, 12 trucks, and then they sit pretty much throughout the summer. But there is new technologies out there, the way they upfit these trucks, so that you can actually swap accessories off the back. Two of them out of the three, we're ordering this way to where, you know, we can get chipper boxes to put on them. So in the winter, we can use these trucks. So as the old trucks get old, and we get rid of them, these newer trucks can be used year-round with this new type of system where you can literally dump the box off it, you can put different accessories on it, whether it's a, a street sweeper, or a jetback, or, I mean, there's all other kinds of accessories. So that you're using the same truck and body, but you can accessorize it based on your needs throughout the year.
Okay.
So it's a financing package over 10 years.
Yeah, so there's multiple uses for the same truck. Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and I will, okay, if, I will say that we should support this, number nine.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? They moved and support. Any discussion on the motion, other than we're buying naked trucks and buying then the accessories to go with the trucks? So I just wanted to clarify that, so you know that. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, your next item of business is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Go ahead. Any reports from boards and commissions? Constable Cloris?
The planning commission, January 27th, received and approved a site plan of Premier Laundry at 1321 Cumberland. That area encompasses about 6,672, or 6.672 acres, Zone M1. To the south of it is a railroad and M2 designation, and to the west of it, on 17th Street, is R1. R1 area on 17th occupies about, where are we here? Occupies about seven pieces of property, of which seven are homes. The area is heavily forested. The, the area between this property and the railroad is also heavily forested with trees. There's an, an existing fence there now, and the addition, which would be in the south part of that property, will also have a fence. To segregate that from the neighborhood, from the neighborhood, uh, M1, or R1. The request was to build a 10,080-square-foot addition, which they'll use as a dryer. This company, this company operates a laundry service and primarily, they service hospitals. There was no one speaking against this, and all the buffer areas and the city requirements will be met in accordance. Anyone have any questions pertaining to this?
Constable Ball.
Do they have medical waste accepted?
Well, only if it's dirty linen.
Just linen?
Hardly any more than you and I might have in our, our washer and dryer.
Oh, okay.
Good answer, thank you. And any other questions?
That's it.
That's it? That was the only one?
That's, that's that one.
Oh, got that one, okay.
And Land Bank.
Yes.
I'll try to be brief on this.
All right.
Uh, the Land Bank has torn down, and the city, excuse me, I don't want to take any credit away from our city people, have torn down 368 properties, no, excuse me, 373. We have partial, partially invoiced demolitions and demolitions waiting in line of 202. We have 160 waiting in line for approval from Environmental and Consumers Power. One of the problems that demolition has hit is they can send somebody with a, with a big pair of scissors and cut the electricity off. The gas takes a little more work, and that's time-consuming. So if there's a delay in, in getting these properties down, it's because we, we have to wait that, plus from AK Peerless Environmental, which will report from them if there's any, any asbestos or hazardous waste that has to be abated. When these properties are let out for demolition, they're grouped in tens or twenties, and they, they make it a point to put them in a specific area so that the contractor doesn't have to move his equipment all over town. They're given a specific period of time to get their job done, and if, if they don't do it in time, it's taken away from them and given, given to the next demolition contractor. Foreclosures for the past period, 29 homes were foreclosed. Three were sold, five are pending. So the availability of homes came up earlier. If anyone's interested in buying one of those homes, contact the county treasurer, get a hold of the Land Bank, and try to determine whether any of them would suit your needs, or whether they're beyond repair and have to be demolished. The Land Bank isn't there specifically to demolish. They would prefer to get them back in the tax wall where possible. And where possible means a responsible homeowner who has the means to take care of their property and get it back in the tax wall is very, very welcome. and get it back in the tax roll is very, very welcome. Other than that, the caterpillar hits that roof and down they come. And I believe that is about it. Oh, the completion date on this is April of this year. But I'm told by staff that they've been in contact, and that extension could possibly get pushed to October. And are we doing a good job? Talk to the people in the state that are giving us the money. We are, we are setting the bar for expediency. They're looking at us saying, how are you doing it? Which leads me to believe that if other monies aren't expended by other communities by their deadline, we may be in line for it. I'm not saying we are, but we're doing such a good job that that is a possibility. That completes my report.
Do we need an extension? We're doing a good job tearing them down. Will we need an extension?
I don't know. It depends on, on the weather. How many are we going to tear down today and tomorrow?
I just asked a question. I'm looking for the answers.
That, that.
Well, there's a committee report, and I, I got to refer it to the committee, so that's fine. That's fine. We'll get the answer. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, any other committee reports? All right. Madam Clerk, we have some appointments you will run us through.
Sure, certainly.
First one is to approve the city council reappointment of Carl Ruth to the Saginaw Transit Authority Regional Services with a term to expire January 31st, 2018.
The motion to approve? It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Point of order, go ahead.
Why are we going to do these the way we do the rest of it? I mean, why are we just going to say, pull the ones out we don't like? And if we don't like, dislike any of them, then we can vote on all of them and prove them off. I don't see no reason why we can't do that.
Mayor, typically there's a [inaudible 0:21:53], so that's probably why, but I think there would be.
Fine, unless the clerk has any objection. A motion in order would be to, to approve the appointments two through seven, leaving room for exceptions. The others are acknowledgements.
Okay. I would like to make that motion.
Was it eight?
Eight.
Two, seven.
Give me the motion again, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve two through seven, leaving room for exceptions.
Is there a second? Okay, we're going to do number two through seven of the council appointment. These are the city council reappointments. Moved and seconded. Are there any exceptions? Number, no.
We have nine on the.
Okay, but we're only talking.
The two are mayoral.
Right.
The first, the first two. The last two are different. Seven. Number two through seven. We already voted on number one. We're now going to bundle number two through seven.
Sounds like a cable. Okay, fine.
No questions? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Great, thank you. Item number eight, approve the mayoral appointment of Gregory Dietrich to the Saginaw Economic Development Commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2017.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
We need to recognize the mayoral appointment of Gloria Adar to the Saginaw Housing Commission, which is the resident position, with a term to expire September 8th, 2018. This is your appointment, Mayor.
This is my appointment.
Yes.
This is a vacancy that has been there for many years, and we finally are able to fill this with a qualified candidate. And that now brings their board up to full, and they've, they've been really very patient, and this is great. And this is based on the recommendation from the housing commission too, so. All right. So, we need a, I just announced that, that's good.
Yes, excellent. Your next.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Your next item of business are the resolutions. We do have a few tonight. First one is authorization to enter into installment purchase contracts for the purchase of three tandem axle trucks for the Department of Public Services in an amount not to exceed
Motion to approve? Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Second resolution approving to appoint Phil Carwood as trustee and Beth London as alternate trustee to the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority Board.
Motion to approve? Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution three is approving the home program submission program for 2015, 2016.
Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next resolution is approving the homeless assistance program, emergency solutions grant submission program for 2015, 2016.
Need a motion to adopt?
No.
Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And your final resolution tonight is approving the Community Development Block Grant Program Submission Program year for 2015, 2016.
Council, what's your pleasure, councilman? Been moved and supported. Yes, question?
Are we saying that we're going with the recommendation of the block grant, or this is just a resolution?
The city manager's recommendation. The motion was for the city, approve the city manager's recommendation.
Which means, with the exception of us working through what we see, so we need to say that.
I'm not sure what, what we said.
We're going to be working on that. What we'll do is, if, I say when, we work through it, we'll bring it back to you. We'll bring the, that allocation back to you so you can reallocate it. You can just direct, direct me to work with them on it, and I think we'll be able to do it before that, that period ends.
So, we have motion to, and been seconded. Any further discussion?
I would like us to try to work with the women of color too. If you can find it in your heart, or think about these young kids who's getting all this great help for those, all those people that's working in that community, I think it'll be a beautiful time. And I just want to let my sentiment be known again.
Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead. Go ahead. You had something? Yes, and Councilman Kolorus did have, wants to continue report that he did not finish.
I missed invited citizens from Land Bank. Containing to the green zone, which has been discussed from time to time. Population in 2000 and 2011 went from 1349 to 1047. That's a decline of 302 people, 22% population loss. The total parcels there are 1,141. I don't know how many of those are inhabitable, but that, the parcel information residential is 81%, commercial is 14, industrial 1, tax exempt 04, vacant parcels are 69. The county land bank owns 41%. The city owns 1%, so percentage owned by land bank and city is 42%. The rentals are 0.9%, or 9%, excuse me. So, you might bear that in mind the next time green, green zone is discussed. The population dropped 22% in 10 years. Thank you for allowing me to continue.
Councilwoman Vandemar.
That we were going to get together and talk about the master plan, the green zone. I think a young man spoke about the same thing, about him having a house in the green zone. I, I understand that we want to do something with it, but I also understand the citizen's point of view when they say there's sentimental value, and everything can't be bought. Some things we have to leave alone.
I don't believe that we're moving people out of that area.
No.
We're not, we're not buying homes there. We're not asking people to move. With your other comment, the, the master plan will be updated, I think it's next year, 2016. So, that's when, last time council approved for Spicer to do the master plan, and they coordinate it, so they have public hearings, surveying, discussions. So, when that comes about, you'll, you'll know for sure because the council will have to approve that contract. So, you can get involved, you know, right as soon as, as soon as we have that in place.
Councilman Kolorus.
Councilperson Moore, the, the land bank very, very clearly has stated that they are not going to move people out. If a person is living in there, and they decide they'd like to move, the land bank, I'm sure, would be very happy to help, help them migrate, help them locate another home, or something that habitat has might, might fit to build, and possibly even help them move. But they will not deliberately walk in and say, you're moving. So, please rest assured of that. They, they made that very, very clear.
Well, I think we need to make, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think that that needs to be made clear to the citizens as well, because they do mention that to me. We keep hearing about the green zone. Does that mean we have to move? So, I think it's a two-way street.
You can tell, you can tell your friends, they can take it to the bank. I made the statement, and I, if there's a Bible, I'm very happy to swear on it.
My only comment on that is, it's, I think we've made it clear that we're not trying to move people.
If they choose to, that's their choice. What we're doing is simply saying that we're not going to try and actively promote that area. That's all we're doing. So, I guess you can't do much more than that. If they misinterpret it, they still misinterpret it.
Move to adjourn.
I have motion, move to adjourn, and support. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.